Yes.
Morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Montgomery County Planning Commission Monthly Board Meeting for January, or excuse me, for June 11th, 2025 to order. Let the record show that we have a forum. And right now, we are, we have a full board with Jonathan, Brindi online, everybody else. Are there any board comments before we get started? Okay, in honor of their, their motion to approve the monthly board meeting minutes of May 14th, 2025.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Are there any comments or corrections on the meeting minutes by board members?
Thank you again, Karina.
You know, you can just press a button and get AI.
They wouldn't be as good.
You still need me, I'm sorry.
Still needed.
They can smile at you.
I was using Google Meet and I was, and I used the Gemini thing to take meeting minutes of. But it also picked up all of the erroneous combinations that I was having about the movie The Matrix. So that was like filtered all within it. So I had to go.
Good thing that's only what you were talking about. We don't have something else.
Well, I don't know anything else.
It's very helpful, but not.
Gotcha. Okay. Seeing no comments. Are there any negative votes in approving the meeting minutes? Right, then we'll move on with public comment or public, any public online staff or public in the room? No. Any public comment on anybody online? Seeing none, then we will move on to our first formal agenda item. Hi.
Good morning.
Do you have a comment?
No. I think I believe I was your first presentation.
You're actually not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
For the EMS, right?
Yes, I apologize.
Just give us one second. We have a quick one before you. So Paul and Scott to handle the community planning assistance contracts for Upper Frederick and White Marsh.
Hey, Stephen, yeah, unfortunately, Eric Daryl had unexpected, has to the funeral today and can't be here. So covering these contracts. We have two new contracts, Community Planning Assistance for Upper Frederick and White Marsh. These are actually pretty significant in that they are new communities, which we're used to renewing contracts in the middle of the year and begin the year. But.
White Marsh needs a lot of help.
They do need a lot of help, yeah.
That's what we heard. Now, and you know, Upper Frederick actually started on April 1st. We work with them, so the project goes, they've kind of had a reorganization there, some turnover. And really appreciate the opportunity for the county to help them reset.
You know, it's interesting to know which, which communities take a breather. The Utah breather are amiss for a while and then come back in because we see that happening. They, they, they're contract communities. They go out into the real world and then they come back.
And fortunately, we have some familiarity that they're part of the Central Perkyoman Regional Planning Commission. So it's not a blind date, so to speak. And so they're going to task us with a lot of flexible assistance at the direction of their supervisors. But we are going to focus on a rewrite of the zoning code as well as according with that regional plan. That contract goes from, I guess, as I said, April 1st, 25 through April or May 1st, 2027. You know, I'm sorry, 2028. And then the total cost is $75,284, with municipal share being $37,016,42. White Marsh Township starts July 1st, 2025, and goes till June 30th, 2028. Its total cost is $109,032, with a share of $54,516. Some of the work identified already is updating the township zoning code, drafting an affordable housing memo, admitting the subdivision later on to ordinance and grant assistance as well as other support. So like I said, we're excited. Tim Kenechi actually is going to be the planner in both communities. He's on vacation this week, so he's, I've already been at Upper Frederick, he's here at White Marsh.
Yeah, White Marsh.
Yeah, cool. But I, I'm thrilled that we are, we are in there now more substantially. There's so many different issues there, but near Conshohocken and the intense development of the waterfront as well as all the more preservation areas in the middle and the G O B up in Port Washington.
You know, when, when they.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Before we take comments, just want to get the motion in. So before us, we have MCPC Resolution 25 dash 6.1 Community Planning Contract Resolution of June 11th, 2025 for Contract 690 Frederick Township and 693 White Marsh Township with the numbers and terms as per Scott's presentation. Do I have a motion to approve? So move some. Do you have a second? Do you have any comments or questions, Tony?
Yes, again, I would like when we get the presentation summaries to have, often when Eric gives them, he says, this will be for two and a half planner days or four. We see the differences in the cost. And I think it's important for everyone to understand the difference in the type of service we're giving them. Sometimes people want, you know, twice a month. Sometimes they want for zoning hearing or what some, you know, something additional to what we normally get, so.
Sure, that's good. We do include the resolution in ten figures, although I had the incorrect versions. I stumbled upon that, but I'll play back it one, I think it's correct.
Are the numbers you have that you renounced?
Yeah, we did a hundred. The dollars were correct, the dates were messed up on my copy.
Stephen.
Hi, War. Just out of pure curiosity, maybe a little selfishness, the affordable housing memo mentioned for White Marsh Township. Give me more information about what they have in mind there and what they're trying to do.
Yeah, actually, that they're taking, taking us up on an offer that we've made to all communities, even non-contract throughout the county. We've done a couple so far. It's our effort to, those who invite us in to, to spend a couple months putting together a quick analysis of both their current districts and opportunities as well as putting forward some of the strategies, really from a zoning standpoint. I think like ADUs and, and the similar types in different districts as well as inclusionary zoning. So that's kind of the point of it. We've been offering that for the last year or so. We've done, delivered memos to Lansdale and Plymouth Township and talking to a couple of us right now. And White Marsh was interested in going down. I think that's part of the spot so far.
Is that a free service if they're not under contract with us?
It is. We integrate it into the work program on our contract communities and it's a little, little different. Obviously, we have a closer, you know, net and closer, you know, a little more robust knowledge to bring to it. But, but yes.
What's the loss leader for the typical community that isn't in any way correct?
I, it kind of depends on how much you spend right now. If it's not a contract community, it's mostly going through our county planning section.
Okay.
So they kind of get into the work because it's not scheduled. And really, the, the reason it's less structured in terms of, you know, budget and cost is, it's, it's just such a priority. We're trying to get things out there that help municipalities that they're asking for it, or those that are, we want to be ready to help them, so.
Any other comments or questions on the resolution? Don, have you got anything?
I'm good.
Any public comment? Seeing none of, any negative votes in approving the resolution? Important. Seeing none, then we'll move on to our next agenda item. Actually, first. So I wanted to introduce Merrick Nelson, who is the CEO of the County, which our portfolio is the Planning Commission's part of. So.
I am, and I love that for being two minutes late. It's nice to meet everyone.
Yeah, I just said, I've been working with Merrick, how, two months now?
Months, yeah.
And it's been great having someone that close, you know, I've previously reported directly to Lee and obviously he has the whole county. And so that was, you know, getting that access opportunity. And now with Merrick here, it's a lot great. Greater to have that connection, plus we're up on, as I told you, meetings with the commissioners on a weekly basis and it's like going well.
Thanks. Yeah, and I, I'll just add that, you know, coming in, it's, it's very obvious that our planning team here in Montgomery County is the best in the state. And I do have that on good authority. My brother actually, the urban planning, went to grad school with Scott and he was like, oh, Montgomery County is where you go to learn how to actually do well. So kudos to all of you on the board. Greatly appreciate all of your oversight and I look forward to working with you in the months to come.
Thanks, Merrick.
Thank you.
So that will move on to our agenda items. So first up is our EMS Strategic Planning Initiative. And we have a guest with us, which is Public Safety from Dave Brown. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning.
I think everybody received the executive summary. I actually think you've seen the whole thing also. If you had nothing to do a few days.
Put it on the pile.
But I'm interested in this, as I remember some of this starting back when I was a commissioner in Abington, that discussions about EMS. And so, take it away.
Thank you and good day, everyone. My name is David Brown. I'm the Deputy Director for Emergency Medical Services in the Department of Public Safety. Thank you for having me here this morning. This is a very current topic. And I don't want to panic anyone, but we certainly need to discuss it to ensure that we continue to move forward and make our EMS system, again, the best in the Commonwealth and make sure our residents and visitors get the best care. I now have nearly, I'm approaching my 50 years of experience in, in fire and EMS services, both upstate in the Poconos and very rural country and down here in an urban environment. Thirty-five years with Montgomery County, so I've seen a few changes over the years. And I just want to relate some of the items that we found out in this study. Just a brief history, we have a very rich history in Pennsylvania for EMS, as well as some of our agencies, including the Volunteer Medical Service Corps of Norbert and the Volunteer Medical Service Corps of Lansdale have over 80 or 90 years of service in our county. So some of these predate, you will see many of the, the other dates here as far as some of the federal legislation in the 60s. In the 70s, we probably, most of us will remember the show Emergency that really took ground. And many municipalities said, hey, why don't we have Johnny and Roy in our community? And it really got the conversation started about planning for pre-hospital medicine, advanced life support and paramedics all across our great country. 1985, you'll see that the state started the main legislation known as Act 45. And this officially added some regulation as well as advocacy for emergency medical services. The ambulances used to be voluntarily licensed and it meant you got $10 more on your Medicare reimbursement if you voluntarily met the equipment, training and policy standards. And then by the 1990s, the, every ambulance in the state to operate has to be licensed by our staff, making sure they have the proper trained personnel, the right equipment and the right policies. And then you see in 2009, the act was updated to include most current legislation. It's pretty much due probably to be done again soon. As I begin today, I just want to dedicate this to all our providers who provide compassionate clinical care 24/7, 365. Nearly every hour in this county, there's at least 10 ambulance calls. And so they're busy all the time. That's one every six minutes. And it is a risk crisis in some communities that are well planned and they have good discussions with their municipal officials. They're doing okay. They're, they're doing well as far as that goes. There are other communities in our county that are struggling. Many EMS agencies are struggling to get folks on the calls every single day. We're grateful for those relationships that municipal and elected officials are supporting EMS. And we welcome additional efforts. There are common regulatory and patient-centered goals that I think we all can share and agree to. And meeting the public expectation is A number one, when they call 911, they expect an ambulance to arrive quickly with the proper trained crews. EMS is deemed an essential service. Just of note, you'll notice that's actually a Cheltenham Cadillac from 1954. So you can see the dynamic changes in 50 years. That early ambulance service was covered by Cadillacs and oftentimes police officers. And I believe in 1954, they had 241 calls, most were for heart incidents. And the second highest call volume in 1954 was for maternity cases. You could see by 2004, again, Cheltenham, the same service, modern ambulances that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. They are even delivering paramedic care on a, on a motorcycle to get through traffic quickly to reach remote sites, maybe on trails or wherever else that, where emergencies happen. They've adapted to get paramedics and equipment right to where it needs to be. Most of our EMS agencies are nonprofit. There are very empathetic folks that are get her done attitude. And for many, many years, again, through the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, mostly volunteers, mostly volunteers, folks that stepped up in your community. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, you know, local folks that wanted to make a difference, raised all their own funds, volunteered to cover the shifts, get the training, everything else. Since the 90s and up till current day, almost all departments now have career folks for obvious reasons. Again, because the expectation is when someone calls 911, they get a service right away. Basically, EMS is bringing modern emergency department medicine to the scene. Things like CPAP, 12 lead, EKG, heart monitors, Whole Blood has just been recently introduced by Lansdale Ambulance. So they're delivering Whole Blood now in their service area as well as ultrasounds in the field. And soon to be announced a mobile stroke unit that will be stationed in Upper Marion. So that will serve residents responding instantly to stroke patients and providing care on the scene. EMS has been in crisis really for the last 25 years, but not just both locally, but across the Commonwealth and across the nation. COVID didn't do us any favors in, you know, further declining the, the people that wanted to assist or continue to stay in the business. Since 1999, here in the county, there's been more than a dozen closures or mergers of ambulance agencies. Most of them were in smaller fire companies such as Bridgeport or Enterprise Hatborough. And they realized that they didn't have the financial budget to continue to operate the ambulance service. This just shows you a lens across the state. And although, again, as I mentioned, COVID caused many major problems. As you can see, the chart on the left talks about the number of agencies that went out of business in those two years. And it's, it's striking that many of them, QRS, by the way, stands for Quick Responder Service. And this is mostly in fire companies that run out with one person with oxygen, an automatic defibrillator and some other initial treatment items. So they're designed to get there quickly and start patient care until an ambulance can arrive. The good news, if there's a little bit there, the, on the right-hand side, you'll notice the 23, 24 statistics show that some of those agencies started to return, some of the agencies that went out of business, so to speak, or stopped running calls in 2020, now started to return and get relicensed and come back in service. So we are at a net plus nine, where, where, you know, at least we're on the other side of the needle now, starting to come back. Again, in Montgomery County, we fortunately didn't really lose any units in this time. Actually, there's one or two in here that Trap and Harleysville merged into a new company called Freedom Valley. Trap has since, that station in Trap has moved out at the request of the municipality. And they've selected a new vendor that skip back ambulance actually covers Trap as an example. The, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What does BLS and ALS stand for?
Thank you for the question. BLS is Basic Life Support. So these are emergency medical technicians that, again, can deliver a certain set of skills. And advanced life support is, or ALS is Advanced Life Support, which means basically paramedics. So they do invasive skills such as 12 lead EKGs, advanced airways, intubate people. They're providing emergency department medicine in the field on the street.
So do the BLS squad, is that sometimes just a fire department people who take the training or are they separate people?
It, it varies. A great example is Center Square. They both are licensed as a quick responder service. They have career firefighters and they're also certified as EMTs, emergency medical technicians. So they will take the medical squad out the door, wearing their EMT hat and treat the patient initially until the ambulance arrives at that scene. So they're doing both.
How much funding do they get from the county?
They get basically yearly grants from the State Department of Health for about, on average, about $2,000 apiece. It kept, that's it. Their, their, their funding structure is relied, is relied upon their billing the patients or other fundraiser, local fundraising efforts like subscription programs or fundraisers and/or municipal support for those that have passed some tax mileage dedicated to EMS, or they provide monies from their general funds.
But it's about $2,000?
That from the state grant funding alone. The county has funded the ambulances, the, the state and the county, just to go back a moment. The county did fund Monco Strong 1 and Monco Strong 2 that provided money directly to EMS. I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but I believe it was in the tens of thousands of dollars during COVID. And the state provided a $25 million stipend after COVID to try to help EMS recover. That was split across the state to over 600 units. And I believe that the amount per ambulance agency was about $37,000.
So the aging community, is there any light at the end of the tunnel that there'll be additional, additional funding?
I'm just skipping all the other slides.
I can go right to the question if you want. That's fine.
Bob doesn't have time for any, you know.
I'm the money guy here.
There, there's no additional funding that we see in the near future. And that's why we're saying this is one of the largest parts of the crisis that, as in any business, so to speak, especially a critical business such as this, that there's not enough funding. It costs more for them to turn the wheels of the ambulance. They're still doing it because that's how much they care and obviously they need to. But it costs, it costs more for them to respond than they typically will get back from insurance reimbursement.
Well, thanks for coming in, Dave.
I was just trying to say, next item. So I didn't, the AMB is ambulance. What's the difference between an ambulance and a squad?
Okay, so an ambulance is a transport capable of a vehicle, so they can transport a true emergency patient, even after all the great care they provide on the scene. They, they need to sometimes rapidly transport the patient to the hospital for, for other definitive care. The, the squad is, carries all the equipment and the trained personnel arrives quickly, provides treatment, but cannot transport the patient. It's basically an SUV or something, or a motorcycle. It's hard to, hard to transport the patient on that motorcycle. Yes, sir.
I, I noticed recently, like Penn just opened, or is under construction for a facility. And I guess it's up at Wentworth, rated 363 and 202. And then I guess the High Valley building facility out in Douglas Township.
Yes, sir.
Do they have ambulances there that can go out on a call or no?
They do not. So I think that's a great point in that there's additional health resources that are coming to the area, but it's not necessarily in the EMS sector, right?
Well, and we have, you know, there are some hospitals, similar services being added, but there are also areas of the community where those are closing and their emergency response times are getting longer because the facility is further away.
That's my next slide, I think.
Awesome. Okay. Back into your presentations. You're welcome.
No, I welcome all the questions. These are, these are great topics. Again, it shows how important this is to each of our communities. And most people don't give it a second thought, right? You think about, I call 911 and, right, and I call 911 and here it comes. And, and again, in many cases, that's true, but there are other cases where that is, they're struggling more and more every day. And so we need to be talking about these issues. And I think there's a perfect synergy with connecting it with our, our wonderful planning commission.
Well, that's because we don't understand that these services are infrastructure.
That's correct.
And the fact that people don't understand even where they, it's like they don't, they think that their post office is where they live.
Correct.
So you get, I have a Greenland post office. I don't live in Greenland Borough. I live in Marlboro Township. But the reality is I get solicited by multiple emergency services. I don't even know which one I should use. Sometimes I give to both. Sometimes I give to neither. I wouldn't know who to call. So it's the geography and it's the understanding of what the service is and where you fit into that puzzle.
Yes, totally agree. Totally agree. And we want, you'll see, it is coming very, it's coming soon here. That we want to talk more about, all of us need to work to educate our communities, educate our elected officials and, and just overall education of this is what EMS is, this is what it is attempting to do every day and, and this is where it's struggling. Because again, if we don't talk about it now and address the issues, one of the main reasons we, you know, went into the study. Nationally and locally, these are some of the major challenges. Again, it's declining reimbursements. It costs more to turn a wheel than actually, you know, they may get reimbursed for. It's great if you're the person paying, you want a low insurance premium, right? Until the provider that is now providing you care gets $200. And it costs them $800 to staff a trained crew and buy all the modern equipment and everything else. So it is, it can be certainly in a domino effect. It starts affecting everyone. The spiral of staffing shortage includes that there's not enough paramedics on duty today. So not every station is staffed, right? And then as further station responds, taking longer response time. And so it is that spiral of the agencies doing everything they can to try to continue to put crews on the street. The 911 calls, of course, keep coming, which is, that's our business of serving the communities. But we need to find that balance point of how do we serve our communities well with the existing funding and the existing resources. And that's where everyone is struggling. And there's a lot of other things here, again, without getting too much into minutiae and keeping on Scott's timeframe today. I'll let you soak this in. We can always ask, if we have time at the end, certainly you can ask questions. So we went to the study. We looked at four main buckets. We talked about, we wanted to look at and assess the county for emerging threats such as, what a surprise, pandemic, right? But any emerging infectious disease, a highly infectious disease, active threat, right? We see those in the news every day with, you know, shooters in our buildings that should never have happened. But the idea that we're looking at emerging threats and making sure we're, all of our agencies are prepared for mass casualty incidents of any kind. I call the next one, the module two is finance, but really it's dollars and cents, not spelled C E N T S. But it's looking at collaborative models. Is it something that, you know, the agencies can combine? Again, many of them have combined more often by, by accident or, you know, by happenstance in that they just finally came to the end and said, we don't have any more money. We have to close in 90 days. And then the municipality is kind of left with, oh no, now what do we do? And our office comes in to help them understand and try to select a new, new agency. And then operations and deployment includes the, the idea of how are we delivering service? Where should the stations be? Should they be fixed stations? Should there be moving stations, you know, as, as in called system status management? Should we move them around to where the calls are happening, time of day, or there's a million other pieces? And then the last is, of course, human resources without the human beings that run our system every single day. The women and men, trained paramedics, EMTs, emergency vehicle operators, administrators, billing experts and/or planners to understand where our system is and where it needs to go. The system isn't, isn't going to make the best of it.
Can I have a basic question?
Sure.
So somebody calls 911, comes to the call station. Do they, they give them their address or wherever they are? Does there's, does the, does the call center's system tell them which, which EMS group is, is covering that area?
Absolutely. Okay. So our, our effort and approach to the study was to, of course.
Oh, go ahead. So it's not who's closest?
It may be.
It's who's covering that different.
Well, it may be who's closest. We have, there's basically two, two primarily overarching policies briefly. 911 center gets a call, processes it, what's, what's going on there? Near as cross streets, the township they live in, they want to get a precise, exact location, right? And they even use, I just heard one yesterday, they use, you know, cellular phone signals and they can ping exactly like on a map where they are. All sorts of technology integration, GIS, et cetera. But the idea is that there's what's called a beat list. So by address, it goes directly into a beat list that says, send this ambulance first, this ambulance second. It's by mileage from their fixed stations. In 2018, I believe, we passed a, what we call Priority One policy. And so that is we use mobile data technology and computers in nearly every ambulance that recognizes exactly where that ambulance is regardless of their coverage area or their home district. If they're dropping a patient at Einstein Montgomery and a call comes in on the trail in the park, their computer, and it's a heart attack, a cardiac arrest, their, their, their in-vehicle computer. Um, their computer, and it's a heart attack, a cardiac arrest, their computer, their their in-vehicle computer tells the county nine one one center. Exactly where they are, they are dispatched to that emergency immediately. So it's called a priority one for those most critical calls. Cardiac arrests, uh shootings, stabbings, uh trauma victims, those type of things. There's a whole list of priority one calls that they get, um, the immediate response of the closest ambulance that has the mobile data technology.
But other than priority one, for the most part, your your dispatch ambulance is coming from. It's coming from the ambulance, um, the ambulance provider for that specific geographic area.
Correct.
Do most people know to call nine one one or do they call their police station or do they call, you know, they look for the name of whatever they provide? I mean, I, do people know?
I I would like to say that there's a very high likelihood that people know to call nine one. And and I I say that from the lens of, again, I just recently looked at a study from nineteen ninety two. I'm old, it's okay. Um, that more than half the state didn't have nine one one. Um, at the time and and think about it, that's only a little thirty more, a little more than thirty years ago. And in fact, Montgomery County turned nine one one on in nineteen ninety three. So, but again, it's it's a relatively long time ago. We never want to assume that everybody knows to go nine one one, so we continue our efforts, obviously, and we have. Um, in in public safety, uh a full-time public information officer that goes out to all sorts of events, national nights out. Um, you know, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, all sorts of community groups and and sends those nine one one, you know, messages to to everyone. And has all sorts of material to encourage even school students and, you know, there's pencils with nine one one on it and everything else. So we've done a a boatload of education on people to understand and to call nine one one. Um, in public safety and we continue to do that to this day. Many of the ambulances and police cars, even fire trucks have the call nine one one on on the rigs. Now, you know, when your emergency happens, you're not probably seeing an ambulance drive by at the time. Um, but but the idea that I I'm pretty sure never say that we shouldn't, you know, stop. But are uh people, most people know to call nine one one. So our efforts were to do many surveys, uh uh engage stakeholders. Uh, we surveyed and interpersonal interviews, uh onsite interviews, group interview sessions, town hall meetings. Um, we, they are consultant, uh did the response time analysis of all the calls from the computerated dispatch system. Uh, did a SWOT analysis, looked at um system analysis of all the um, you know, comparisons to other systems. Of equal or similar sizes by population and by density. Um, and then we got the study. It really was, um, some of these were first because it it was really one of the first times that I'm aware of that. Uh, ever really approached it from a county whole, right? A ca- a perspective of the whole county. Um, individual agencies, there's seventeen nonprofit or government EMS uh primary nine one one agencies in the county. Some of them have done individual studies, but what did that look at? That looked at only their area. And what we want to be sure that we don't do is have um EMS deserts, right? Areas that are well planned and served and then other areas that are, you know, poorly planned or served. So we want to look at equitable a distribution of EMS across the the county. Um, it was unique, I think, in the sense that we engaged uh Scott France and Drew Shaw and they were amazing on our steering committee. To help with this. Um, to me, this EMS planning and municipal planning is, we're side by side, right? We do this every day and I've had the pleasure to work with so many wonderful people in planning over the years. We're talking earlier, Rob and I were talking earlier about Leo Bagley and and so many other people that I, I won't even be able to, you know, name. But so many people I've worked with within the planning commission over the years, and I think it's a perfect fit for us to be working together on this. Um, with, uh, it was unique in that public safety, the the leaders um in public safety. Uh, decided to devote homeland security funding to this because, again, the the uh, without criticism intended, the. There's not a lot of other funding from the Commonwealth or from other sources to do these type of studies that really need to be done. So we're on the forefront, probably the first whole county uh study that's been done in the in the Commonwealth. Um, and we, it was driven by local level input. We wanted to put the local ambulance with their local elected officials. Having been a new Hanover Township supervisor, I know how important it is to have the local community services work hand in hand, side by side. With the municipalities and I know Second Armor's had many meetings with with Abington Township at the time. And to me, that's a wonderful thing. We want that local relationship to be very strong.
Okay, is there, is there competition or are they really just, you know, second alarmers handles a certain area?
Did you look at my slides?
There is competition. I I.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, yes, absolutely. No, you're you're spot on and and here's. So here's what they found in the in the study and the weaknesses and threats. Again, inconsistent um funding, uh again, costs are exceeding revenue for any business, right? If it was a pizza shop and the cost, you know, if it costs you five hundred dollars an hour to keep the ovens on. Um, and you only sold two pizzas, would you be in business for long? Probably not. Um, but the the, so there's operating costs and exceeding revenue because of poor uh technically insurance reimbursement. And or lack of other uh additional funds. And I'm not beating up the insurance industry. I'm just saying they're not getting enough. No, I'm I'm just gonna, for the record, I'm staying out of that one. Um, financial stability, again, many of our services, Bridgeport, uh Bridgeport and uh Fire Company had an ambulance back in nineteen ninety nine. They wrote a letter to the editor that apologized to their community that because they no longer had enough funding, they had to sadly close their doors. And to me, without, again, and any criticism intended, it's almost the other way around, right? The community should maybe with the right message had been supporting them, they would have continued to operate as a as a local ambulance. But uh, they they had to close up for a lack of sustainable funding. Um, workforce changes and challenges, again, folks today, uh many are not even wanting to get into the EMS business. Let's face it, it's twenty four seven. You get woken in the middle of the night by a pager, you run out and, you know, you're empowering someone that's. Uh, maybe, you know, not not intentionally sharing, um, you know, gross body fluids with you, but they're they're uh. You know, they're very ill and they need to be taken care of and we take care of them. Um, all, you know, all hours of the day and night. So many folks today are not uh wanting to enter the the business because of perhaps low pay, uh long hours and high stress. Uh, service level response is fragmented, again, because there's competition in the marketplace. So in order to pay their bills, there's only one or two ways, right? If you're a business, there's only one or two ways. It's either get, make more business or uh find other revenue sources or both. And some have done that, to their credit. They have done, uh, some of the ambulances have done transport services, so they'll do interfacility work. They're doing blood draws for the police departments now and they get a few uh, few dollars for doing that. It makes a lot of sense instead of the police officer having to go to an emergency room and spend hours getting a uh suspected. Uh, maybe DUI to get a blood sample, to wait in the ER. Makes that whole mess with the the number of hours involved. The ambulance goes right to the police station. They can properly draw blood and then hand it right to the the police officer, chain of custody, everything.
You want the EMS is to try to find more business, like.
Well, well, that's what I'm getting to with the competition, that they're only, yeah, not find business in that sense, sir. Um, in the sense that they're looking to cover the neighbor's call, the next ambulance call over. So when that station doesn't have an ambulance on duty, the county dispatches both ambulances. The home ambulance and the neighboring ambulance, called a cover call, and that ambulance is gonna respond as quickly as possible to try to serve that patient. Um, and so that's where the competition comes in is that they're looking to. The neighboring squad is looking to take that business, so to speak, and get that revenue. Um, at the expense maybe of the of the hometown unit. So it's just that competition. Um, that, again, delays, may delay patient care, may uh, they're not all working together as one, you know, department. Um, and so that's where it's still there. And then service reliability, again, over the long term, are they still gonna be in business? And certainly the last is system design that, you know, really gets to the heart of the matter is, you know, is there a better way maybe to do this? So the study also showed that, this shouldn't be a probably surprise to anyone, but here's the uh heat map of the call volume of uh of all the services in the county. This is derived from our computerated dispatch system, our nine one one data. Um, that shows the very busy areas, of course, the the highest heat map is in the North Town area. Um, the second highest would be the Pottstown area. Um, and again, this is not a surprise, but what I want to point out here is about half of the agencies, you'll notice, are very relatively very busy. And have probably enough call volume to sustain service, but you look kind of to the north and west. You'll see that the heat map um is a much smaller, there's a much smaller amount of calls. I would uh relate to you that those services may have some of the same fixed base costs, right? For them to staff a parama- a paid paramedic and a paid emergency medical technician in some of those north and west areas. They have some of the same fixed base costs as the busier services do. So that's where this friction becomes, right?
Okay, for any of the, any of the ambulance or EMS groups, are they funded? Or part of any municipal government or are they kind of at an arms length with a relationship?
It depends. Again, we have sixty two wonderful municipalities. Cheltenham Township, as an example, has enacted the half mil EMS dedicated tax. Um, no one likes taxes, but no, but the the converse to that is people want an ambulance to arrive in a timely manner. So Cheltenham, I think, is a good, in my opinion, is a is a success story in the sense that they've enacted a half mil dedicated EMS tax. And yes, the ambulance is primarily funded through the township, through the municipality. Um, other examples of that is Upper Marion has done that. There used to be a Lafayette ambulance that was a nonprofit ambulance service. Um, and they get struggled to get people because of compensation and benefits packages. Um, the township, the Upper Marion Fire and Emergency Services, uh hired a full-time uh chief for fire and EMS. And they manage the entire fire and EMS operations under the Upper Marion Fire and Emergency Services. Um, Upper Providence is starting to do a little bit more of that. So we're seeing some of our largest municipalities and busiest municipalities begin to find that synergy between uh local services. And and finding that all the others are nonprofit agencies struggling with trying to buy healthcare for twenty people. And, you know, buying supplies for two ambulances.
And I think there's also municipalities, I think, Abington, like, I know there's others that that provide funding to the EMS groups similar. Similar to the way they provide funding to their volunteer fire.
Correct. And so there's, you're you're absolutely right and thank you for putting that out. I I don't want, I I just wanted to mention Cheltenham as a, as an example. There's almost a third to almost a half of the municipalities do it, do have, in fact, a local enacted EMS dedicated tax mileage. It ranges from a nickel to that fifty cents, the maximum allowed. Um, just recently, Douglas Township passed the half mil uh EMS tax that brought in almost four hundred thousand dollars for. An infusion into the ambulance uh company and that's, that's really, really big. Um, I believe New Hanover has enacted uh one hundred thousand dollars for their local EMS from their general fund, the township.
Do we still have volunteers who do this?
Yes, there are still many volunteers and and Volunteer Medical Service Card Norberg and many others have still volunteers that do this. Uh, but there there, some of them are aging out. Some of them have been volunteering for many years. Um, some of them have other family obligations or are leaving EMS for a various number of reasons. But there certainly are still some volunteers. I don't want to make it sound as if there's not those dedicated folks that are doing it um out of the goodness of their heart.
Okay, can, could you or can you go on a marketing campaign to try to raise money? For the townships that don't support the EMS?
Well, we, I think we'll get there in a second. So, uh, uh, of course, our, at the end, our goal is always patient-centered quality care. Um, we want to see improved outcomes, um, improved patient experiences, again, as long as how long they wait. The the crews and and how they take care of the patients, um, improve customer satisfaction and reduce costs. Um, whenever possible. So the study came up with a total of thirty six recommendations. Um, and I just gave you a, got a summary here, you know, in the interest of time. Uh, but many of them, the reason you see point five is some of the recommendations obviously involve more than one discipline per se. But you can see that the, you know, there's there's recommendations for the agencies, the municipalities. Um, there's three recommendations that might call for the, an ultimate authority model, um educational recommendations. Um, operation systems and the public safety answering point, that's the fancy name for the nine one one center. Um, so many of these are policy-driven, again, as far as mutual aid calls and cover calls and being on status and being available to respond. Um, using the mobile data technology, uh, technology that the county has provided. The only thing the agency has to cover is the the uh cellular airtime per month. So the county provides the the computer and all the other technology. Um, yet there's a couple of services that have chosen not to, not to buy into that. Um, human resources, again, is always important and specialty recommendations. The study also provided for the MS agencies toolkits and best practices and templates for doing quality assurance and quality uh improvement. And yes, we use a lot of acronyms in in EMS because EMS is an acronym. Um, so our strategy and and thinking through this is, again, probably really that number one point. We want to educate, advocate, support, assist, plan, and get action to progress, to move the system forward. That's our job as the regional EMS council contracted to the State Department of Health to improve, expand and, you know, make the EMS system better. Working with all those partners. We don't have any direct control over that, but we have influence over trying to move that, move that needle forward. So we certainly want to unpack the study, engage our s- our stakeholders, develop a consensus. Um, perhaps re-engage a consultant group to be project coordinator. Um, to embrace some of these recommendations, work with, again, elected officials, communities. EMS and planning groups are absolutely imperative to moving this forward and getting, you know, to where we want to be. Um, and consider, you know, framework for operational authority. Again, as you can imagine, some of the uh EMS agencies have a long, again, legacy of of service and experience. They're, if you will, maybe concerned about losing their own identity and joining into a larger group. Again, I'm sure everyone in this room has experienced that with one or more groups over, over time. I think these are some of my favorite slides and I only have a one or two left, um, so Scott doesn't get a big hook and pull me off the stage. Um, but again, I think together we do, we educate, advocate and assist and plan with communities, right? So public safety and the planning commission do that almost every single day. So I think that's why we're a good fit together. Uh, regional planning groups are connected to local governments and communities. We just heard about two brand-new uh connectivities this morning with White Marsh and Upper Frederick. That's great stuff. The more you can work together with these folks and and help them understand, have a conversation with them about what is EMS, what are their struggles. Um, i- it will help everyone. It will, you know, the the high water lifts all the boats, right? Um, and you have the experience working with these local elected officials. You have, and we we both collectively put a vision together to collaborate and to gather stakeholders together, have hard discussions sometimes. And then find a way forward. Um, you do a lot of forecasting and preparing for change, right? Nobody likes change, but we all understand it's gonna happen, so we need to continue to try to drive things in that direction. You have data that helps immensely in making good decisions, right? We can take the data we have, we can look at the data and say, what are the trends? Where is it going? Um, in population data, your um, the the home values in each municipality. You know, we can do, and we did do the math on what if each municipality even passed that half mil tax? It would be their decision, but what would that, what would that look like if they all chose to support the operations in that manner? And again, project development, including applicable funding streams, you folks do that all the time. We both provide sage and valued advice, uh, as opposed to warning, you know, creating stress and more panic. I mean, sometimes we may give that advice, um, uh, but are, we're not like the weather forecasters per se, are we? Or are we like Punxsutawney Phil that once a year he says, here's my prediction and people say, ah, you're full of it? Or are we like Chicken Little and, uh, you know, raising the panic level? No, we're that level valued advice that says, this is what's happening and this is how we want to try to make it better. Um, and again, I think lastly here, planning and cooperative efforts work together. There's two examples, again, the nine one one central center. Before that, there were sixty two distinct and small, separate uh police dispatch centers, if you will. This is in the early nineties, right after I arrived in the county. Uh, it took a few years and many, many discussions and many, many other things. But what ended up out of that after years of planning and discussions and uh project management is the public safety answering point. That's, you know, runs every single day, twenty four seven in Eagleville. Um, it's quite an operation. Uh, and again, it took years to get there. Many municipalities were like, oh, the county's taken over. Uh, you know, we're gonna lose our few, uh, certainly local jobs and we're always sensitive to that. But again, was the whole better than the parts that made it up and we worked through it. And again, in my mind, these municipal uh partnerships such as wastewater treatment plans or uh local councils of governments. And those type of things, those regional planning groups, they're already connected with those communities. And those, I think, are where I would like to focus our efforts uh now. And those, I think, are where I would like to focus our efforts, uh, now and in the future, to work together to get those, uh, discussions happening in those areas to say, this is an EMS. This is the EMS study. These are the recommendations. Which ones can we, uh, work together on to move the system forward? And with that, although I took a few already, I don't have a limit, but I'll, uh, try to answer any questions, and I think we're still on time, Scott.
So questions for Dave? Um, I was, I'm curious, do you, through, um, like, industry groups or associations, see a lot of the problems that you talked about here today occurring in other counties across the Commonwealth or even in other states?
Yes, absolutely. This is not a local problem. This is across other counties of Pennsylvania, definitely, um, and across the nation. Um, and we're, we're also seeing those trends of other areas that are having, especially the rural ambulance, uh, industry is really failing. Um, but there's multiple examples, uh, as I mentioned, not only in Montgomery County, but across Pennsylvania, where services are closing up. Um, sometimes it's because they're afraid, they don't have enough members anymore. Um, they're afraid of COVID, they're afraid of the stress, or again, it's aging. There's departments that it breaks their heart because they've been providing local volunteer service for fifty years. But their folks are now seventy-five years old. So they're just aging out, and there's no new young people, um, coming into the industry or not nearly enough. So those agencies are closing up, and we're, we're using that as a lens to say, and that's where we, you know, had the study compare, um, some other areas of the country of how they've maybe recombined, um, all the resources that are out there to make it stronger. And again, no one likes to lose their name and identity. I served on Honesdale Volunteer Ambulance from the seventies through the early nineties when I moved down here. And then in the mid-nineties, they, uh, could not continue to operate because of funding and vol, uh, and, uh, even paid personnel, and they closed up. So it's hard to see your, you know, hometown ambulance or fire company close down. Um, but it's, it's the reality of today's world that it's really expensive and takes a lot of training to, to run a good, uh, EMS operation.
Yeah, as a follow-up to that, one of the things I was curious about, and you spoke to it a little bit there. Um, you know, a number of strategies came out of the EMS study here. And I was curious if there was any documentation through the completion of the study about other communities in Pennsylvania or across the country that have implemented some of those strategies to success, you know, for, for some of those examples.
So there are some there, there, there is some, some information there. I, I would be remiss if I didn't, and I actually forgot to, but I will now. The, the entire study is published on the Montgomery County Public Safety webpage. So just, uh, Google EMS study, um, and you'll find the whole document there. It's, it's pretty lengthy, but there's some really, really terrific information in there. So the comparison they did was said, they looked at, they looked at other county systems that were, um, you know, nine hundred thousand, a million people, similar size and geography to ours, and then how some of them recombined, um, into a more efficient system. So, um, and, and there's others, we continue to post documents there. In fact, there's a lot of good documents that we posted with permission from the Pennsylvania Association of Townships. Uh, they've been writing about EMS in crisis, I believe, since two thousand and five. Uh, we presented to the Montgomery County Association of Townships in two thousand and eight, um, indicating that EMS was stressed and, you know, would continue to change. And since those days, again, we've watched services like West Norton Ambulance close, Sauter Town Ambulance close. Uh, and again, fortunately, because of VMSC Lansdale, as an example, they, uh, assumed those response areas and put ambulance resources in those stations. But yeah, as I mentioned, over the years, both locally and in the state and nationally, services are closing up all the time. Um, one's very strongly, in Berks County, has done some recent, uh, little bit of study, and we've been keeping them posted on our, our study. I also understand that our study, um, was looked at by the governor's office to be considered for looking at, you know, future initiatives across the Commonwealth. So we're, we're proud to be part of that front end of, um, you know, our study, kind of being first.
Um, we teach EMS as a course of study, either in our tech school or our community college. And it's so, I know in our comprehensive plan, one of the things we were, we're looking at in people and jobs is a description of what that job, what kind of training need for that job, what the future expectations on salaries are, what experience kind of blends. But that's really something that would, the county could support in helping to bring the people into the field.
I, that's a, that's a great, um, thought, and it is one of the recommendations to re-engage with the community college. Up until twenty sixteen, um, the community college through the State Department of Education was fully funding all the instructional costs, or most of the instructional costs of the emergency medical technician program, and a, a good share of the paramedic training program. Um, the EMT program is, uh, more than two hundred hours. So it's not only a time commitment, but it's a financial commitment. Um, so yeah, anything we can do, and that's one of the recommendations, is to re-engage, to get, uh, offer more training at maybe a lower cost or a better cost, or no cost would be awesome. Also, the workforce development product, we've been working with them, but we don't have a solution yet. But there are, um, other things, there's, there's a couple of programs that are starting to get some traction, but they're not across the finish line yet. Yes.
So you've mentioned VMSC a couple of times, and that's my, you know, my home community. You're in a good spot. We're in an excellent spot, you know, we're, we're lucky to have such a professional, uh, volunteer medical corps. Uh, and Shane Wheeler does a great job with the municipal officials and helping them understand how their investment in, in that service really does serve the community well. Uh, it's interesting, though, that, uh, you talked about them taking over Sauter Town, things like that. Seems like there's a real catch-22 as you, as you start to explore opportunities for additional revenue streams to support your own core, that you start looking at the, uh, poor homes of the world and the Philadelphia, the Penn community, and the CHOP and transport services. But every single one of those, every single one of those opportunities requires you to invest more money in resources to provide, to be on location there. And so how do you, how do you really balance trying to keep your costs down to be economical, but yet spending more money to explore and expand its own to keep yourself floating?
And maintain your level of service.
Yeah, yeah, and so, and that's, again, that's the million-dollar question. And to Shane's credit and many others, um, it's that business savvy. It's like, how would you decide on whether to invest in stock A or stock B? A little different, but, you know, in the public community, how would your store decide to run a new brand of product? Right? Is there a cost, risk benefit, right? Um, and so some of that is the, some of it's just by, I don't want to say, no, I, I won't say. Um, much of it is that business savvy, looking and saying, okay, blood draws. Um, it makes sense all the way around. The, you know, the, the ambulance gets a few hundred hours, which is good for them. It doesn't take a lot of their time and energy. They can still maintain their service area. The police know that they'd still rather wait forty minutes if the ambulance is on a call right now. I just heard one the other day, Lansdale or Skipback, I think, was called to the state police barracks for a blood draw, but they were already out delivering a critical patient to the hospital. So the county radioed the ambulance, the ambulance said, we'll be there in twenty-five minutes. And the police were fine with that because they know that for them to go get a blood draw, maybe at Einstein with no criticism intended at Einstein, it may take four hours. Right? So the cost benefit to both the police and the service they're getting and the blood draw helps both, right? Um, Lansdale, VMSC Lansdale has operations in Monroe County. Um, they have, uh, they work with CHOP and pediatric transfers and things. So they've looked at the market and realized that it's not just all about vanilla, right? Sometimes it's chocolate, sometimes it's strawberry, and they've, um, and then one of my slides had the, the point, I think I passed by it pretty quickly. But it's going from the traditional one-size-fits-all of you call us, we go to your house for the emergency, we take you to the hospital, and then we go back to our base. But there's many hours that they're sitting in between. So they wisely said, what else can we do? Um, they could do DoorDash. I mean, I'm joking, but, but I mean, they could do any other business that didn't detract from their primary purpose. So we're, we applaud the services for looking at those alternates without compromising their emergency nine-one-one response. Thank you.
You, you had mentioned that in two, I believe, in two thousand and eight, you made a presentation to Makedo?
Correct.
It's been, you know, in seventeen years, you think it's time for another presentation?
Absolutely.
As far as, you know, like, well, if you do a half a mil, you're generating that. We can increase our salary to the people that would manage, things like that. And I think, you know, ha- half a mil is, is nothing to most people. And, uh, you get a good turnout for, I think there's one in the fall, Makedo this year.
Yeah, they're usually in the spring and the fall.
Right.
Um, I don't know if there was one this spring, but it, it's absolutely a perfect time, you're absolutely spot on that, especially with the EMS study. We're working one-on-one with municipalities, I've been working closely with Douglas lately and New Hanover. Um, but any, any municipality that calls, that's part of our duty, is to work with those municipalities and help them understand. I remember Upper Gwinnett had contacted us a few years back, they were looking at relocating a, a fire or EMS station for better service support. So we provided them some, um, you know, mapping information and some other run-volume data. Um, so we work with the municipalities all the time. Um, I personally have been involved with planning for, um, many, many townships, uh, coverage, including Whitpe and Limerick, uh, so many more, Hatboro, um, over the years. So absolutely, we want to engage with the municipalities. Um, we're gladly engaging with the municipalities and giving those over, overview presentations at Makedo and other groups so we can communicate the message that we want to work with the agencies. And again, Shane Wheeler is a great example where we said, please, you go and be that steward to those municipalities that you serve. It's not unlike the police department or the fire company giving the township of, of some information, right? Here's how many calls we responded on the month, here's how, how busy we are, here's what it costs. And that's, when I get back to two thousand and eight with, is that, that's when the state actually passed a law, again, without getting too deep into it, but passed the, uh, law that said that municipalities are responsible for fire and EMS, uh, coverage. It encourages the ambulance, the fire or ambulance agency to have those annual conversations with townships. Most often, obviously, and makes sense to me, and we've communicated this to the ambulances for years, is go in now, right? June and July is when they're doing next year's budgets. I remember doing that, that cycle, obviously, when I was in New Hanover as a supervisor. But typically ambulances will go, uh, one went to a borough in March and asked for money for a new ambulance that had a hundred thousand miles on it, and they said, who are you? We've never seen you before. So they didn't have a relationship. They said, even if yours was, yours was the best project in the world, we don't have money allocated in March for us to give money to you in March, right? Would have to take from some other budget line item that somebody else dutifully came in, in August and made a presentation, right?
Well, that's why you get on the agenda right now for the September Makedo.
Sure.
And take your report, sixty-two copies or the disc with hundred, like, short, and maybe generate some attention.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you, did you do corresponding mapping, did you do corresponding mapping for response lines?
Um, yes, I didn't show those slides.
Do they have a correlation to the locations or the concentration of the EMS groups?
Yeah, so they're, they did mapping on, and it, it's in the full report, um, but they did mapping on, again, those heat maps of where the most calls are occurring, and then where most of the recalls are occurring, and all those type of, uh, analysis. Um, I, I'd have to look at the exact time, but there is some correlation, obviously, between the most densely populated areas, the number of units that they have on duty. It's getting pretty complicated pretty quickly, as you can imagine. But there, there, there are correlations between the number of calls in a particular populated area. That's why we most often look at, you know, per capita. But the other big, uh, drawer is some of the, um, uh, the longer care facilities, as you probably know, and I have this, of course, memorized because we talk about it all the time. But there are over seven thousand licensed, uh, nursing home beds in, in Montgomery County. There's nearly a thousand licensed nursing home beds in Springfield Township. So those also draw on EMS resources. In fact, again, years ago, I just heard this morning, uh, a call there, um, that reminded me of the exact name. But as an example, um, when Limerick Township was looking at building one of the fifty-five-plus communities, um, they contacted the county and, and our office and said, we know that, uh, what is the planning effect or the building of this facility on, what is the impact on EMS? And I was able to say at the time and even today that nearly half, forty-six percent of all the patients that EMS sees are over fifty-five. So nearly half, nearly fifty percent of all the EMS calls in the county in any given year are for those patients aged fifty-five or older. So obviously, building a, a, a long-term care community, um, you know, or a, a fifty-five-plus community, uh, nothing against that, I'm in there too. But, uh, uh, the idea that, you know, there is a larger draw on impact. And yet I could tell you that I've been in meetings where a, a fifty-five-plus community was proposed, and, uh, some of the leaders in the room were saying, they were given some, uh, funding, some impact fees, that what, you know, what, what did they want to do with it? Some of them wanted to fix an intersection, some of them wanted to put a police station in that community, some wanted to put a fire station in the community. And I kind of raised my hand and said, I, I think the thing you're really probably going to need is a ambulance station, maybe? Right? Um, and again, not to embarrass anyone, and I, I get it, you know, the big shiny red trucks are wonderful. I grew up in the fire community as well, um, they have their place. But in a fifty-five-plus community, most often, my guess, and with some good data, would be that ambulances are in there probably more hopefully than police or, or fire trucks.
Yeah, so one of the municipal communities that I serve in Chester County, they have a process where they require the land developments to do a study and coordinate with EMS services. And specific to those aged pipe developments, they have to pay essentially what is an EMS impact fee. And I was curious if any of our communities in Montgomery County have that set up.
Not that I'm aware of.
Another logical revenue source, at least an infusion at the beginning.
Absolutely correct. And that's back to the, the long-term thinking of an authority model, which there are other ones in Pennsylvania. Um, again, I know some of the ambulances are resistant because of losing identity. Uh, but there may be values in, in combining and efficiencies. And an authority model can, in fact, uh, allocate, uh, levy fees, uh, impact fees on facilities such as nursing homes that are maybe nonprofit or somehow, you know, built in a way that they're, they're not necessarily paying their fair share of the, the impact that they have on EMS. And if, if EMS is taking a patient out of there with Medicare or Medicaid insurance, um, there, again, the reimbursement is even lower than sometimes what the insurance, you know, private insurance reimbursement would be. So it's a bigger cost. Um, uh, other ones with very large assisted living or independent living apartments, um, there's a huge impact on EMS, uh, for what's called a lift assist. Okay, so Lower Providence Ambulance is, uh, suffering wonder greatly about the idea that they have thousands of calls um, in their running area that sends a full loaded ambulance or a lift assist. They get there, certainly they want to do a medical assessment. Um, they get the person, if they're not injured and don't need to be transported, they get them back into bed or on their feet or whatever. Guess how much money they get for that call? Zero. So that's a huge impact on building that community, which is wonderful for the people that live there and for the company that operates it or whatever. Huge impact on EMS, zero reimbursement because they, they could only bill when they transport to a hospital, and they, it's capped. They could send a bill to the insurance for ten thousand dollars, but the insurance is only still going to pay them maybe four hundred. Yes, Scott?
What were the things that, you know, and being part of, a small part of this process along the way? And what struck me early on and throughout is, you know, the, uh, known, the people involved with this knowing the challenge of, uh, the provincial nature of, of all these companies and not wanting to, you know, give up. And we're, as planners, we're very familiar with that and the other arenas, uh, with municipal governments and other entities. Um, but I'm curious, like, wh- what is, what's the primary kind of reason or, or, for resistance to more consolid, I mean consolidation, but like an oversight, you know, regional, more regional authority? Um, is it, is it revenue? Is it, is it not having control over those calls and maybe worried about not getting the ones that they need to support themselves? Or was it something else that I haven't been able to figure that out?
You know, i- it's, it's, I think it's the, it's kind of that, that mystery of life in the sense that, it, I guess it always looks good when it's somebody else putting things together. But yeah, I think it's that loss of local identity. There's a, there's a tremendous amount of pride for a very good reason, like I said. These are dedicated folks that have all but dedicated their life to this, whether they're compensated or not. They are empathetic folks to the nth degree. Um, and, and I understand, I do understand that they're, they're very proud. Um, they've served their communities for so many years, and they don't want to lose that local identity, I believe. And the other is just that, is that if there's now an operational kind of process to this, and they, they fear, I think, without understanding, that it looks like a loss of revenue. It looks like we're proposing something that is doing away with them. And in fact, I truly believe, and our whole mission- And in fact, I truly believe and our whole mission is to make them stronger. So they're there and with an authority model levying fees on them municipality. Again, no one likes new new levies. I understand that. I truly do. Um, but like, uh, was mentioned, most people probably spend more than that at, you know, buying their weekly coffee. Um, or or whatever else. And I think given the uh the community given a choice. Now, law was a little cheaper, but no. Um, but given the uh, given the community. There's no judgment here. You can have whatever coffee you like. That's okay. Um, no, the idea is that the community needs to understand that they're they're supporting. Uh, supporting the ambulance services and that actually an authority, most likely, even though they would be now a collective. Overall, operationally, it would be more efficient cost-wise, would have that probably more personnel available to them. And we put the ambulances in the right places because once the fees are coming in, then obviously the expectations even higher that, hey, I paid my. Half mill EMS tax. I have a very high expectation that EMS needs to arrive here quickly.
Is there a maximum to the uh mileage rate that that a municipality can try to create?
Stands right now, the max on under the state law, and that's that Act seven, eight and nine of two thousand and eight. Is that half mil unless there's a voter referendum. So Ben Salem's a good example where Ben Salem. Uh, has appealed to their community. I believe it was actually voted down in one uh voter uh sequence. But in the next voter sequence, it was voted i- uh in that they actually are authorized to collect uh two. Two point zero miles. Um, so right now, under the state law, uh, half a million.
And it what, um, how many municipalities, uh, of the sixty-two municipalities in Montgomery County? Assess a a mileage for EMS?
I believe it. It's at least a third of them. I want to say it's in the neighborhood of twenty-two or twenty-three. So we're at least a third of the way. But as I, as I mentioned, again, as a caveat, the some of them are at the half mil. Other ones are only at like a a nickel or two. And again, I believe that. I believe we have a a published list, I'm sure you could. Most, most municipalities will even post it on their website.
Correct.
That they have a local, you know, their local taxing uh makeup. So it's again, educating those, I think, local officials. Understandably, everyone goes in hollers when they impact or put new fees on on residents or properties. Um, but also then think about it, some of the western areas still are growing, right? I mean, they're not, we're not completely built out. So as those EMS agencies may already be struggling, as people move in, if there are property assess or, you know. Geographic assessed fees for them, then new people moving in will start already paying into that. Prior to this, all those organizations, and I'll equate it to. Uh. My parents and grandparents who they would, you know, like clockwork every year. Fill out that subscription fee and join the ambulance for a hundred hours a year to prevent any balance billing. But most people today, the the subscription drives and fund drives that the ambulances do try to encounter, it costs them thirty thousand dollars to send out the mailing and. And set it up and they might get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back. So it's it's barely paying for the cost. It's a little more than obviously the cost of the the publishing and the mailing. But again, the the subscription fees, most folks are, oh, it'll never happen to me, you know, um, again. Most folks, not everyone, but but many folks are like, oh, you know, they're in denial or I won't ever need an ambulance whereas. You know, they just don't see, and you know, most calls are one on, one to one, right? So you know, more than seventy percent of all EMS calls are one-on-one. They're not multi-victim car crashes or they're not. Um, you know, any other type of major public event. There are singular cases, one of them.
Did the study, uh, did the study approach solutions based on? The way your system is set up now, where, remember we've talked about it over and over in this presentation. At versus a a different type of system like a government-run system where the governments or the municipalities or the county is. Is providing the service.
So we didn't, it didn't get that far. Um, the idea that. These thirty-six recommendations would move us, definitely move the ball way forward. That would be the the actual operational model. They suggested several. But it wasn't necessarily whether it was private run or or government run. It was more like, let's set up a, again, like a wastewater authority, right? Let's set up an authority representative of all those municipalities that choose to join. Um, and then from there, develop the exacting model and the exacting levying of fees and and, you know, those those items. So it was more of getting re- getting a representative board. In essence, it would have one centralized. If you will, board of directors, right? Instead of each individual agency having its own board of directors today. And they're mostly concerned about their own service area for obvious reasons, and that's understandable. But the idea that you'd have a broader view, right, of the, like, this board looks for, out for every municipality in the county. Whereas, again, without criticism, the uh, you know, Limerick Township supervisors primarily look out for issues in Limerick Township.
Not sure I, not sure I see how that operation works, but I guess that's something that. So. In your mind, after you've been through this several times, this presentation and understanding of it. What do you think are the two biggest threats to the EMS system in Montgomery County? Uh, based on your conversation, based on your presentation, I have my own thoughts. I'm sure everybody else has other thoughts too, but what do you think are the two biggest? Threats to the EMS system?
I would say the way we deploy the the resources. And and definitely the finances.
Okay.
And if I had to pick a third, I would say the people.
Right. Is there, is there a direct correlation between the lack of, lack of um. Coverage by EMS as to, is there a direct correlation to the lack of coverage of EMS services? With the contraption of hospital and medical care services?
Not necessarily in Montgomery County.
Okay.
Uh, Chester County, or I'm sorry, Delaware County was a very unique occurrence, only in a sense, and we, I don't want to spend another hour, but the idea that. Crozier as its Crozier and Taylor as hospital systems were healthcare and Crozier. Paramedics covered about sixty percent of all the municipalities for paramedic field coverage. So that that was a a double whammy um in that sense. Um, we've had hospital closures in my career now. What's I I thought I was. Think I was two for two. So I was here in nineteen ninety-four when Sacred Heart closed. Um, I was here when Montgomery, they didn't, they closed in Norristown, but really moved to East Norton. So I don't know if that's a, that's a, an opening and a closing. Um, then CHOP opened as a, as a new pediatric resource, which was amazing. Um, Lehigh Valley Gilbertsville opened since in my career. Um, so yeah, I think we're three plus and two minus. Um, but now Suburban General, that's it. I'm three for three, three, three open, three closed technically. Um, with Suburban General moving to a behavioral health center um on July one. But the idea with Sa- Suburban General is they, we saw the trend, again, looking at data and saw the trend that about. What last fall, I believe, they announced that they were basically uh reducing or eliminating all their in-house services, right? No ICU, no, no upstairs. They really became what we call a microhospital. Um, with like ER beds and some overnight beds just to transfer folks out, much like Lehigh Valley Gilbertsville runs. And it's a valuable community asset. It doesn't really affect EMS as much as they need to be able to deliver patients to definitive care. Um, so it is gonna definitely strain uh us, the suburban example. But we saw that ambulances have been taking less, fewer and fewer patients to the Suburban General Hospital ER in the last several months. Right? So it's not a perfect world, but the transition was a little better in that there were several months when the. Uh, ambulances and probably obviously the most impacted would be Einstein Montgomery would be receiving a much more uh potent. Uh, introduction of EMS patients. And the other thing to note is that EMS takes about. EMS delivers about less than ten percent of all patients to the emergency department. So ninety percent of that, of course, is walk-ins. Um, and folks from the community, again, that may uh struggle to get healthcare. Conversely, though, think about it, if they are concerned about getting healthcare. Um, by walking into the facility, what might they do? Call nine-one-one, thinking, and many folks for years thought that if they called nine-one-one and got an ambulance. That somehow they would get faster into the emergency department. And I just wanted to spell that as a myth because certainly nine-one-one will respond to that emergency. Um, and take them to the facility if it's necessary and needed. But they still go through the triage process when they arrive at the emergency department. Um, it doesn't give you a a a ticket to get um into the emergency department any faster if you are.
Yeah, it's a fast pass.
Right, incorrectly.
Are there any other, um?
Looks like there's some questions in the back.
That's all right. Uh, Chloe's got her question.
Hi Chloe.
Thanks for coming to visit us.
It's kind of your multiple parts.
Asked about zoning, uh, in terms of citing a new facility, are you aware of, I know that doesn't happen all that often, but it happens. Um, issues in terms of finding a location that will permit a EMS facility? And I hope, just what are any issues around that with zoning or citing citing stories?
I'm not aware of any recently. Um, historically, I remember the, um. I'm I'm blessed with a very long memory, but I do remember the Sibley Avenue address for Volunteer Medical Service Corps Narberth. Was a community issue, like kind of a NIMBY thing um at the time. And obviously, they were able to overcome that with the discussion about, you know, they're gonna be good neighbors. They're not gonna be noisy all around the clock. Um, with the sirens going off and the, you know, klaxon going off in the station and all that. So the, to my understanding, this, the last one I'm, I was aware of was citing of emergency uh stations was, again, that probably was the. Mid to, mid to late nineties. And the Sibley Ave address, like I said, I think it went through it several uh community zoning uh hearings. On citing of that, uh, kind of in a residential neighborhood.
Other questions?
So, um, this is another piece of, and we're just services, but I don't know if it's to EMS that actually responds, but one of the other things that we deal with a lot is. We're seeing new housing developments pointing to the flood plain and that they you locked off during a, the flood emergency. And then we comment to the township, like, like, make sure that your emergency services are prepared to deal with this. Do you get those calls?
So not in EMS, but as part of public safety.
Public safety.
And in from my past experience working in both EMS and emergency management. And Director Brian McCown is here from the Department of Public Safety. Um, but uh, basically that those, those floodplain issues are in the flooding and hazard mitigation plans. And um, again, the county emergency management works closely with those municipalities and I'm sure with the planning commission. Um, to to develop those plans. But again, you know, the townships again can say, yeah, we. Completely embrace these or we do otherwise. Um, and again, it's not a criticism other than it is their local choice whether they're gonna do that. So sometimes we do uh become frustrated because. We believe that there are ways to maybe prevent some of that emergency response into those emergencies. Um, that could be prevented, but it sometimes isn't, is it, doesn't help us.
Um, a hard question, hard opportunity. Um, it seems from the conversation that there is a lack of education, like you need to raise awareness about these issues. Um, and I'm surprised I'm bringing up the comp plan and Chloe did not.
I was, I was gonna do that next.
Yeah, we do a lot of comprehensive planning. We do sustainability plans. We do lots of plans where this sort of issue could be raised and addressed. Um, you talked about the information that we were able to provide. Um, is there information that you can provide us? Is there a way to set up a, like, an easy-to-use conduit where we are working on a comprehensive plan? And we can have a point of contact or a matter of being like, this is a type of information for this community, for this county. Where we think the community would be, it would be beneficial for them to have that information, you will be aware of these issues. Um, just kind of, the more we can market it, the more we can raise these issues and as in any of those. As easily as possible, I think, with the conversation.
I have one word answer. Absolutely. Um, that, absolutely. You can take that twenty dollars I put under that, taped under that seat for that softball question. But no, it just makes total sense. You're absolutely right. You have data that is useful to our plans and planning. You know, it's not the plan. It's right. It's planning, right? It's the action that's important. It's that continuous. Process. And yeah, I've had the the honor again to work with, like I said, so many different people in the planning commission over the years. Um, many of you I'm on a first-name basis with, obviously, but um. We want to continue to do work together on that, absolutely, because you have data we need and we certainly will find ways to bundle data back to you. I know I've provided commentary to the twenty forty plan and now the twenty fifty plan. Um, and other, other plans over the years. Again, when I was doing more in emergency management, I worked all the time with Michael Stokes and others in the. Hazard mitigation planning world. Um, I see you have a hearing coming up, I believe, on a piece of hazard mitigation. Did I see that incorrectly or not?
Yeah, the Perkyomen Flood Study.
Yes, that's it, the Perkyomen Flood Studies. Thanks. I just saw that yesterday, I think. So there was a shout out for your Perkyomen Flood Study. Um, and thank you Chloe and everyone that, and I've worked with with you many times. Um, and we would love to continue that relationship.
Quickly, as long as it's not repetitive.
It's not repetitive. Um, morning, David. I'm Austin.
Good morning.
Um, you have mentioned in your presentation at least twice, um, using the verbiage of communities that are well-planned and served. Um, if you were to poll each of our planners, what a well-planned community looks like, I imagine eventually we'd all hit probably the same points. However, what we list first would be unique among each of us, I think. Everyone knows what I think makes well-planned community. Um, David, as the Deputy Director of EMS, what makes a well-planned community?
Hmm, wow, and I only have one answer? Anyone that knows me, I could talk like three hours on this, so I don't know, you know, I should even answer this question. Um, honestly, I think a connected community is most important. Um, and and you know, that's obviously a very broad brush answer, but intentionally so because. And you all know my passion, of course, but uh, connected communities are are key.
Connected meaning? Connection is very, very broad. Munka twenty forty talks about connected communities. Um, do you mean connected physically, socially, structurally, all of the above?
All of the above.
Where, where anybody on line there, Corina?
Uh, Jonathan has a speaker off, so I'm thinking he wants to ask this question.
What's that?
Jonathan Randy has a speaker on, so I wasn't sure if he wants.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I just uh wanted to say this was a riveting presentation and and Dave knows his stuff cold. Uh, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jonathan. Anybody else before we move on? Dave, thanks. I appreciate it. It was uh enlightening and disturbing at the same time. So, but I appreciate the work you've been doing.
Thank you for having us again. We're, we're, we'd like to come back anytime. I think there's a lot of great things we can do and I'll continue to work with Scott and another team to to move the ball forward together.
Great, thank you.
All right, you're very welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to our next agenda item, which is twenty twenty-four construction report and calling Dave for residential and non-residential construction report. Morning, Dave.
I'm handing out an amended version of the non-residential report because we mean last minute needed. And making into the, the equity sound out.
Very nice. Thank you. All right, Dave.
Not as cool as the first Dave, but I'll, I'll. All days are cool. Thank you, everyone. So, okay, uh, yes, I'm gonna be going over our twenty twenty-four residential and non-residential bill reports. But right before I do that, I just wanted to give a um, a quick overview of all of the reports that. Due throughout the years, because I know we give you, we give you all a lot of them and just kind of a recap and just a little. Give you um, so a little ordination of where we are in the year. So January, of course, we release our annual summary report, which is all the proposals and submissions that we see through our two forty-seven. Database. Um, March, we go over the mean housing prices for, and where we are now. Given the housing, you know, non-residential. And in September, we'll go over the inventories. Or we traditionally go over the inventories, multifamily aid or strength developments. Um, I should not say, and I should say, uh, shopping centers and and uh business parks. But I, and those are taken directly from our. Uh, reports, our annual bill reports. And then throughout the year, we do the best of our ability, track major developments through our quarterly construction. Construction reports. Um, these are multifamily units. Uh, developments with at least fifty multifamily units and uh, and at least thirty thousand square feet of non-residential. I say that because uh, all of these put together help us obviously track what's been built in the county, but also. What's, what's coming and, you know, we, it helps us to research what's happened and what might be potentially having and happening in. what's, what's coming and you know, we, it helps us to research what's happened and what might be potentially having and happening in the future. So just a little insight there. Before I move right into our housing units built, so we've had a little departure from our previous years in terms of our total residential. Last year, we had 1,782 units built, which is a, a 26% decrease from the year prior. This was driven by a significant decline in multifamily units compared to previous years. As you can see, over 70% decrease, uh, from 2023, 360 units total. Uh, single family attached grew a little bit, 34%, uh, 34% and detached homes remain basically steady. And of course we'll go into how this all aligns with the comp plan. And as we all know, we are updating the comp plan so that growth and preservation map will look different when we do these reports next year. And just going into five and 10 year trends. So yeah, single family detached and attached is variable somewhat year to year, but generally pretty steady. Uh, single family attached, we saw actually the highest number we've seen since 2019. And of course multifamily, as we see through, through the, the decade long trend, you know, traditionally it has been at least since 2014, the largest major house type of, of three house types that we track up until this year where it dipped, uh, below what is what we typically see well below, what we typically see and we'll be getting into that. Just an overview of where we saw most of development throughout the county. So Montgomery Township, uh, saw the most units per year. This was mostly driven by the luxury lifestyle of apartments that were built in Montgomeryville. It's 225 units total. Um, and so that, that was a major driver, then really the only major multifamily development we had in the county this year. Horsham, Upper Marion, Bridgeport, these are either driven by, um, in Horsham's case, especially age restricted housing, which we've seen, which is continuing to build, they're continuing to build on that. Upper Marion, Bridgeport, major town home communities, um, have been, have been up there as well. Just an overview of the single family detached is, you know, generally spread throughout the county still, you know, we're seeing pockets of density in Douglas, Upper Potts Grove. Down here, um, is some that's driven by age restricted units this year, the Potts Grove Hunt community. Uh, um, and you know, a lot of these were, especially in Horsham and Hatfield, uh, driven by age restricted units. And attached units, this doesn't look like as many, but it's actually more just because they're all on top of each other. But you have Bridgeport, you can see the, it's never works. Um, the bridge view, uh, community continues its construction. They haven't started on the multifamily portion yet, but town homes continue to be developed and Upper Marion seeing, well, the overlook at Town Center and Stonebrook and Upper Marion, major developments on that front. Multifamily, so, um, uh, Montgomery, you see the, the luxury lifestyle apartments there. Also had, um, you know, in terms of the kind of midsize, we've seen the Creekside and Mainland, which is kind of straddles Lower Southford and Talamanson. And, uh, the alcove at, um, at Forest Lane in Schwenksville. But yeah, you can see definitely, um, later on the multifamily in terms of major developments. And this is a, a little bit much, I know, but you know, when we want to get into why a development has, or a pattern has changed so drastically, let us first start off with what's been proposed over the last five to 10 years. And what we have right here is we're taking from our annual summary report that we do in January. Uh, this is every, all proposed residential units by type in 2014, 2024. And looking at these and, and here is, uh, what you see below are the largest multifamily developments proposed in 2023, 20, uh, 22, 24. And you know, looking at these, you're thinking, okay, well, have we seen a drastic decrease in what's been proposed? Have these developments just had trouble getting through the process? Are they just not simply being brought to completion, whether that's, you know, high interest, remaining high interest rates? Um, you know, just certain developers having difficulty in putting funding together or just halting projects that were proposed. So you can see there has been a decrease in, in proposals, uh, in multifamily for 23 and 24, but that doesn't directly affect what, uh, this past year has seen in terms of completions. Um, it's, it's generally been pretty consistent with the exception of 2020. And, uh, but you can see though, in the 23 and 24 multifamily proposals, you see less major developments. You've got a couple developments that are in 200, uh, multifamily units or 200 units or more compared to 2022, where you've got, you know, 500, you've got, uh, 111 present for Woolbar, which is 425. So in short, it's not so much that we're not getting a lot of proposals, but it's the type of proposals we're getting, but also, and also whether those are brought to completion. And to zoom in a little bit further, with this is our quarterly construction report we just did for quarter one of this year. These are currently all of our multifamily developments of at least 50 units that are either under construction or inland preparation phase. And based on this number, based on this report, what is slated to be completed for, for this coming year. So we'll see this when I present this next year is at least a slight increase for, compared to what we've seen this year. So about 571 units are of the developments in this report are, uh, scheduled to be completed for 2025. So that's at least, uh, and slight increase that we can anticipate for this year. But you know, the, as you can see though, a lot of these developments, they're obviously been in the pipeline for a while and first proposed anywhere between 2019 and 2024, but mostly in the 2020 to 2021 range. Um, last year, when I, when I completed, when I presented this report, we were talking about Madison West Elm, we were talking Centennial Green, um, the province at, at Town Center. Those were all major units that have had a similar era in terms of when they were proposed. Um, but just, we're seeing fewer major developments brought to completion. And, um, that can also reflect, uh, developers having trouble with funding, have prevailing high interest rates that keep these projects from being completed. And not surprisingly, potentially leads to fewer overall proposals for 2023 and 2024. So just trying to track that history there and make sense of it is, is why putting all these reports together is so critical.
And, and David, sorry to interrupt, but, uh, I'll just add, I looked at this yesterday when I was thinking about these numbers. Um, for 2025 to this date, we've had 1,700 units proposed, uh, 900 of them, and so which are multifamily. So the trends of the last 10 years are still in play despite this kind of a flip and David's great job illustrating how some of this.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's interesting when you look at the quarterly construction report, quarter one, year proposed. I mean, we, we do have to remember and you see it in this chart, COVID. You know, I mean, we want to focus on the interest rates, absolutely a factor, but the reality is these projects, a lot of them have been lingering. They suffered through COVID and knowing a lot of these projects on the list are suffering for other red tape and other issues that are holding them back.
And we've got new issues right in front of us of, um, we're global stage of what happened.
Right. It's ever shifting, but when you dig into it a little bit, there are a lot of factors at play here.
Yeah, certainly. And then COVID obviously slowed, you know, a lot of these down. So that's, that's going to, we're still feeling that effect, uh, today. And this is something that's, you know, been going on throughout the region, throughout the country, um, and just some, for, for some broad perspective. From, we typically utilize a lot of CoStar data, um, you know. The city of Philadelphia last year saw an increase in the number of apartment units built. All the suburbs saw a 42% decline in new units, uh, entering, entering the rental market. So this is, well, our decrease was a little higher than that. It's, you know, kind of a part and parcel of the broader trends going on throughout the region and ultimately the country. And so that's, that's our, um, that's our ability, the analysis of that difference. Shifting a little bit to age restricted housing, uh, we saw slightly s- a fewer age restricted units than last year, 267 total units. Um, perhaps not surprisingly, no multifamily units were of this, of this, uh, total. We saw, uh, Dell Webb and Hatfield continue to develop, you know, it's of, um, and then as well as Horshams, where you see a waterside continues to grow and it's 100, added 110 units this year. And then the new development, Potts Grove Hunt in Upper Potts Grove, 59 units, and that comprised nearly all of Upper Potts Grove's, what's built for last year. And the growth and preservation map, which will, you know, as we update the comp plan, this will look different next year because, you know, we keep growing and, and, uh, you know, we're seeing a little bit more development in rural resource areas this year. It was 126 units built in the, the developable portion, rural resources. Uh, some of these were, as you can see, kind of on the dots here, this, you know, single family homes built in Douglas, Upper P- uh, Potts Grove Hunt development was built in a rural resource area as well. So that explains a lot of those. And, uh, we've had a few in conservation opportunity areas. There was a portion of Upper Marion that was, uh, the last go track that saw development on what was technically a conservation opportunity area, which kind of, you know, hovering right on that. So, so that explains a lot of those, but of course, this is going to be changing. So it's, um, you know, just want to keep, important to keep that in mind as we're analyzing these numbers. A lot sizes for a single family detached, uh, actually went a little bit down this year. Typically stayed somewhere between, in terms of the living area, excuse me, not lot size, around, you know, the low 3,000, as we saw, uh, 3,101 uh, square feet to have a median this year. Lot size total went down as well, uh, to a little below 12,000 for a single family detached. This is overall. Uh, these are so variable though, uh, so it's important to show the overall trend over the 10 year period. So just in summary, yes, significant increase, multi family decrease. Interest rates protection, Charles COVID, a lot of factors, as we know, uh, fewer large scales, multifamily's been brought to completion. But the 2025 totals are so far as we can tell slated to be a little higher than this year. And we've cert- we're seeing a few proposals from 23 and 24. So we'll keep an eye on those and, and see where that trend takes us. And more development in the rural resource areas as well as the comp plan, I think, continues. And going right into non-residential development builds. So we had, uh, 1,000, 1,052,512 square feet of non-residential building this year. It's a 45% decrease in 2023. Uh, in many ways driven by a decrease in industrial projects and seeing, uh, kind of a decrease all over the country and the region of major industrial projects, warehousing, manufacturing. It's kind of been again, part of a larger story. Commercial made up 38% of the non-residential. Commercial's been generally pretty stable, but some few nuances. And of course, how does this align with the comp plan? Overall trend, um, yes, decrease from last year, we're seeing, um, pretty big spike in 22 and then kind of brought down to, to a little bit more of the. And just here's where everything fell within the county. So as is typically the case, most of your commercials fall along the major corridors. Had some industrial that was a little bit off the major corridors though, and that could be, you know, those were mostly smaller scale industrial. We didn't quite see nearly the amount of, um, I shouldn't say quite, we didn't see nearly the amount of major warehouses and manufacturing, distribution centers that, you know, may have likely, but it is closer to, um, to major transportation corridors. Just a little zooming in of some of the specific developments. So commercial, we had, um, biggest project was our public storage facility in Bridgeport, a little 30,000 square feet. And, um, but as you can see though, you know, last year we had a few large projects that were, um, over 100,000. So smaller, smaller scale projects this year, residents in Scott Key as well. Industrial is kind of the big story of, uh, or the big, you know, notable observation in non-residential though. So nothing was 100,000 square feet that we saw built last year. Global packaging expansion in 98,400. O C M manufacturing and the pressman, or, you know, 122 Pressman Road and Skipback, um, you know, so a lot smaller this year. Last year we were talking about the core five buildings that were built at Talamanson, that was 400,000 square feet. In what's kind of been a larger trend across the, the region, uh, and the country is again, you know, certainly COVID, but also, and also builders find, finding financing. Um, and then, you know, some of the, some of these places haven't found tenants yet. So it's, I think, kind of been, we think really been slowing down a lot of the industrial space, uh, or the demand and the drive to build those. So, you know, this is, um, as an example, the core five development is also supported by the third building. So that's not really been, that's still, they can fight. So bothered on that. Institutional, Lower Moreland High School, uh, the new Lower Moreland High School. Um, and Lehigh Valley Health Network Buildings, Gilbertsville and St. Charles Burmaia Cemetery that their campus is a little winded, uh, it's, it's there. Their student life center and their dormitory, and there's still some ongoing developments there. And here's where they all fall into birth and preservation plan. So, you know, overwhelmingly growth occurred in, uh, or non-resident development occurred in growth areas. We did see existing preserved open space and rural resource areas. You gotta be careful because a lot of these, we had a few, um, maintenance buildings or, you know, um, the community buildings in our parks this year, our bulk courses. And, um, so those are, so those logs and comps constitute what happened in rural resources and open space areas. Vacancy rates, we still, we want to get 2024's, um, vacancy rates. We just want to make sure the methodology was in the system. But yeah, you can see those, uh, a slight dip in, dip in the office vacancies, not surprisingly from COVID, then a slight rise. Uh, or not surprisingly because of, um, some people that are just back to work or, or just, you know, overall, uh, tenants being, you know, uh, filling out those spaces, but then a rise again in 2023. So it remains to be seen what we'll see in 2024, we even get, definitely get those numbers. And just the summary, uh, commercial uses decreased, but, um, you know, generally remains steady, just fewer major developments in storage facilities, um, institutional development, big increase this year, and they're mostly driven by schools and hospitals uh, in terms of their development. And industrial development's kind of been declining across the metro area and really, you know, so significant increase there. And 92% of all of this development is proven in rural areas, but of course that's, you know, uh, if we present it next year, it'll, it'll, that'll look different. So it'll be interesting to make the comparison, uh, then. So I know there's a lot of information in like, what was that, 10 minutes?
Um, questions for Dave? Do you have, I, I know you talked about, I didn't see it on the commercial, but you, you have some projections towards the residential. You have some projections as to where we're headed with some of the commercial development?
Well, we do have, um, so we have several, in terms of industrial development, I mean, we still have, um, we have quite a few under, under construction still, um. We're not sure exactly what's, you know, we're about to update, uh, our second quarter. So we'll definitely have better idea of that. Maybe in a month, um, but no exact projections for commercial industrial. We have major warehouses that are still kind of in the early phases of, um, development. So we'll see if they get, you know, when they're built to completion.
Not on board in 2025, but at some time they're working through the planning approval process.
Yes.
Our first half of 25 proposals have been, uh, a little slower than the previous year, not quite as, as I mentioned with, uh, the housing was back, back, kind of back to pace, but non-residential was not as high. We're about 900,000 square feet. Yes.
And, and just in looking at the first quarter construction report where we do have a pretty sizable list of non-residential development in St. Paul's, but a lot of it is the institution. Um, the expansion at N State Paddington. Expansion at the Brandon Church School. There's, uh, new construction. Expansion at the Brandon Church School. There's, uh, new construction at the Western Canadian Seminary. The middle schools, supermarket, not the same level of, um. Institutional construction that are rather industrial.
Questions for Dave? Comments? Right online? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See for the next one. Okay, next up is our Monaco twenty forty implementation grant awards for twenty twenty-five. On Florida.
Fine, it'll be a fun one. So, um. This is our grant program that's existed for ten years. This was the tenth year of giving money away and. It's always fun that commissioners approved three million dollars to gifts this year, um. And I will tell you, you didn't even got it, that they were awarded. At the May fifteen twenty twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting, so not even quite months ago. So, this is the program prior to this year. Um, we had awarded grants to fifty-three municipalities. We're now up to fifty-four after these ones I'm about to show you. Um, the average grant awarded was about hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, we got thirty-one applications this year, uh, from twenty-seven different municipalities. And we'll say what we did with them, this focus categories, you know about that. Okay, so we looked at all the applications. We reviewed them based on whether they addressed our county adopted county comp plan goal, which is like the core of the program. That's why it was. Uh, instituted in the first place when the Monaco twenty forty comp plan was adopted in twenty fifteen, this program was a way to help implement that. Give municipalities money to do things that achieved the goals in the comp plan. So had to do that, um. Connections to county assets, consistency with local and regional plans or other plans, um, had to have in some kind of an impact that. Transformability, feasibility, longevity, otherwise impactful. Um, does it leverage other funding sources? Many, many, many of these grants leverage a lot of other grants. So we give money and other agencies give money and it ends up being, um, a much larger project than. This program could accomplish on its own, and some of them don't. Feasibility of the budget, is the funding secured, like to be. Do the project, um, looking at diversity and equity and inclusion, was there an outreach process to the community to come up with a project idea? Does a target audience benefit a group that's experienced disparities? Are there any other benefits to? Uh, diversity, equity, inclusion belonging? And then project readiness, if have, if we've awarded them money in the past, have they managed to actually accomplish the project? Do we think that they've taken the preliminary steps needed to get the project done? Does it have a realistic timeline and do they have some kind of a maintenance plan? So committee scored these things. We looked at all these different factors. Um, many thanks to the members of the committee, including Dulcey, John, Nicole, and Sandra who are here. Really appreciate your commitment. From other parts of the county staff, Alia Gerard, Steve Forser from Commerce, Terry and Yvonne, who's also here. Thank you very much. Your time and your commitment. And then our staff from, uh, MCPC that were involved, thanks to. Everyone for serving on this committee. It's a lot of work in a small period of time. We like get all of the grant applications. And then we try to read them and score them and meet to discuss them, um, all kind of in a condensed time period. The rest of the year of serving on this committee is every once in a while, an occasional question about something, which I did just send you one. But, um, much less intense, so, but then my thanks to all of you.
Sorry, who were the four from, I can't remember.
Dulcey, John, Ernst, Nicole, and Sandra. Thanks to you. Okay, who got the money? Seventeen municipalities. Um, it's a little more than we've gifted in recent years and some of the asks were a little smaller and we had more to give away. So a combination, you could give it to more people. Uh, East Greenville for Action Park. Uh, making a number of improvements here, uh, adding trees, adding a path. Rebuilding Kingsbeth Park, greener, better, greater. This is the largest park in the borough of East Greenville, small place, so it's nice and unique for them. Hatfield Township and Hatfield Borough, uh, a joint application. Um, but this will be a first award for Hatfield Borough, so I guess technically that means we go up to fifty-five. We can count this for Hatfield Borough. Um, for various bicycle infrastructure, it includes signage, um. Striping of sheros, bicycle fix-it, fix-it station and other information, so.
I'm putting along just, uh. Anybody watching here.
Yeah.
That hasn't been involved. The table at the top shows their other grants and if it's green, that means they completed it. Correct?
Yeah, I'll list this one simpler because there's only one, but that's, thank you for pointing that out. So in the past, if they got a, if it's, if there's a dollar amount, that means that we awarded them. And if it's green, that means they completed the project. If there's a dash like that, it means they did not apply. This one has a D, which means Hatfield Borough did apply once in the past, but we denied the application. We did not award that application. Um, and then this orange color means that they have a grant, but they didn't complete the project. No surprise if we only awarded it. A year ago that they haven't finished the project yet, so that's not necessarily a bad thing. Uh, but yeah, that's what those, thanks for pointing it out. So you can see the past history there. Okay, Jenkentown, um, applied for funding to do intersection and pedestrian related improvements in five locations around the borough. These are great projects, I personally feel like they're great projects, um. That are going to have a meaningful impact on what's already a very walkable place that actually has a lot of pedestrian activity throughout the borough, so, sorry. Sure. Good stuff, and it continues, they've been doing things like this over time, so it's great to see it. Lansdale is going to repave and widen, uh. Trails in three parks, including eliminating AD barriers, steps at the end, one trail that's going away. And also some tree planting is part of this project.
Okay, well.
Land still got money, yes. And yes, John Ernst was on the committee and I will just say that he was very good about being completely like out of the room.
But I didn't come back.
I can't say for sure.
We're going in, this is a culvert replacement project. It's, um, an area where there's flooding, where the culvert does not. Adequately, um, addressed the stormwater needs. They're gonna replace and improve that. Lower Providence is adding essentially like two blocks of sidewalk, but it'll make connection from it. So this is based on a plan that they did. To study existing sidewalks and trails and prioritize connections. So there's, um. This neighborhood off to the right here, and then there's this, the Ottomon Loop Trail, which connects to the Schuylkill River Trail here. Uh, and this, this one block of sidewalk will help this whole neighborhood be able to access this, these, um, these areas as well as this ball field, popular ball field here, so. It's a block of sidewalk and some intersection right there. Lower Southford is doing a stream restoration project. This involves, um, restoring natural hydrology, native plants. Um, stream bank restoration, thanks. Okay, New Hanover, this is, you can see from this here, they never applied for a grant ever before. So it's impossible to award a grant to a community that's never applied. So we were glad to see an application from them and. Um, it turned out it was a good project and we were happy to award this. So they've acquired this tract of land, which is going to become a new township park. Um, they have all kinds of ideas for improvements, but this project is primarily to put trails throughout the park, which will also provide connections. To neighborhoods and, um, commercial areas. You can use the trails not only to circulate within the park, but to get places on the township. So we're. Excited to, and some other things to support this first phase of development of this park. Uh, Norristown, this is actually, we or have awarded earlier phases of this project. Um, before they're trying to transform Arch Street all the way from Lafayette, where it connects to the Schuylkill River Trail, uh, up. Like six spots total into this green street, um. Eventually to connect to another route that would go to Norristown Farm Park, so. Um, we gave them some funding for a future phase of this project, Green Streets. Uh, North Wales has a, a great thing going on where they're taking a. Former church building and transforming it into a community center, the, the North Wales Arts and Cultural Center. Uh, that's already an ongoing project. They have other sources of funding. Um, they've already done a lot of, of improvements to the building rehab. Um, the community's really excited about this, really supportive. They have some tenants and some of the office space. They're gonna have, uh, a rental space. If you know anyone who wants to get married in the new North Wales Arts and Cultural Center building, you should check it out. But this funding application was specifically for building security, so we're happy to help them with some. Um, cameras and items to support this adaptive reuse project. Uh, Perkyomen, similar to New Hanover, they've acquired this large tract of land. It's going to be a new township park. Um, they're going for a totally natural restoration, so it includes stream bank restoration, includes. Natural surface pathways, it includes a food orchard, uh, community gardens. And, um, they're trying to put them near this, this is like an assisted living facility and this is kind of one of their more dense neighborhoods. They're, um, putting some amenities over near there. There's so many other things they have plans to do with this park, so it's great to support that. Pottstown wants to redo some of, uh, one of their neighborhood parks. Uh, adding, uh, some additional picnic tables, a new, uh, pathway through here that would be AD compliant and they're having this. Bank shot basketball system, which I'm not familiar with, but I guess that's very popular.
What's on with others advance twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four?
Um, that's where I come in. Now we have a file on face, don't ski, he hasn't been thinking about it.
We want you all of this.
We're so close.
I'm just worn out, Anne.
He just wanted to hear your voice.
Uh, so the twenty twenty grant is the Colerfield Railroad Grant, um, it was. Mostly out of Pottstown proper spans, uh, the. Pathway of the building is completely waiting on, um. Installation of guardrails, I guess. No way, they've more than spent the money at that point, and I encourage them to do a financial reimbursement to close out the grant. Um, the twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I get that.
Um, Red Hill Borough, uh, in partnership with the Curcumin Valley Library is making several improvements. Smallest amount of money that anyone asked for, and we were happy to help support them. Um, this includes these UV blocking blinds. This is, this library is in an old industrial, a former industrial building, so it's already an adaptive reuse project. They have these huge windows, um, that help them, that hinders their ability to, to cool the building in the summer. And it also is causing damage to some of the materials. They're getting these fancy blinds. Um, they're improving the doors so that they can have ADA push buttons, help people with mobility challenges or thrillers get in and out of the building and then. Um, putting new, uh, LED lighting along this pathway that leads to the street. Uh, Royersford already has a lot of blocks of this street scheme that you can see on the bottom right. They wanted to extend it an additional block onto this block with the same kind of bricking and lighting, et cetera. So we're supporting that project. Um, Talamanson has these two very old stormwater basins that the township owns in a residential development. Um, and they want to upgrade them to the latest and greatest in stormwater management. Um, and they will include an educational sign. One of them is right by the sidewalk about what is this thing, uh, how to manage stormwater. And it will also better manage the stormwaters and native plants included, all kinds of good stuff. Antraff, we awarded this project last year. They've done a great job. They've done some incredible restoration. You can see. Um, this was just completed in twenty twenty-four. This is the kitchens, another view of the kitchen with a program that they're having in there, um. This is pre-reparation. Yeah, they want to get it all done before next year when they are doing, celebrating the. Semi-quinsentennial. Uh, but they're already doing a lot there. I mean, they have, are, they already run programs and classes. Have events on the lawn, other stuff, and they're gonna really ramp that up for next year as they complete the restoration. This is also another thing that was completed, uh, in twenty twenty-four, restored, um, this little porch and the. Uh, masonry, et cetera, was all kind of fixed up and ready. So, more money for them so they can finish that. I'll just add that as part of my conversation with Historic Trap, I did also reach out to. Our contact at the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Society and talk to them about other funding sources and, um. National Register designation and sort of helps make a connection there. So, you know, sometimes other good things can come of these project applications just with our other. Connections knowledge, so, uh, good stuff. And money. Um, West Norrington, this is the last one, is improving this bus stop. You can see this great bus stop. So, and by a ditch, right, it's still like stuck in, there's a ditch, there's cars traveling right there, so.
Some days you can take a swim while you're there.
This will be way better, um. Also, West, West Norrington technically was awarded one time before in twenty seventeen, but they withdrew the project. I'm not sure the story there, but. It was early on in this process. They applied for something, we gave them money and they decided to end the project, but it was feasible, so. Even though this doesn't quite count as a new award, it will count as like, they'll probably be able to actually finish this project. It seems very feasible and. They seem very dedicated to actually doing it. And that's it. We awarded three million dollars on the nose. Um, again, thanks to the committee and I can take questions if we have them.
Any questions for Chloe? What is that last picture?
Just a couple of the questions.
Could be one, one question and one of the statement of sorts. Um, so question curiously, how like, um. With what frequency would you say you awarded the amount they asked for? Or were you kind of?
That's a good question. Only two of the awards, in only two cases, we award less than they ask for. Um, and one of them was the Speaker's House in Trap. They asked for the maximum award of two hundred fifty thousand and we gave them. Like two hundred thirty-five, six or something. It was only a little bit less, relatively speaking, and, um. That was how we were able to get to three million dollars, exactly. And then Norristown, um. Is ambitious with their Green Streets project. They've completed phase one. Phase two is in progress. Phases three and four are fully funded and they actually applied for that funding for phases five and six. And they also asked for the maximum grant award and we felt that is a great project. We want to support the project. We want to support Norristown. We weren't sure they were quite ready for, um, I mean, I, I know it takes a really long time sometimes to assemble all the funding needed for a project. And so we awarded them a hundred thousand instead of two hundred fifty thousand with the encouragement to them, like as you move forward with. The previous phases that are funded and under construction, please come back to us if you. As you announce funding for phases five and six, which they intend to do at the same time, like three and four are gonna happen together. Five and six, so we, um, those were the two. Everyone else, we awarded what they asked for.
And if I recall correctly, there was communication with those applicants that it wouldn't, you know, derail the project. We award you lesser.
Uh, that makes sense. Um, and then more of a statement, and forgive me if it seems like a stray, but I'll try to bring it around. Um, I guess for Scott's benefit than everybody, in my background is in affordable housing, so, um, let me go over there for a second. In the affordable housing world, when affordable housing developers are proposing new deals using the low income housing tax credit, which is a competitive source of financing. Uh, there's two key moments that developers interact with the county for information gathering. One is around, uh. Alignment with the comprehensive plan, and the second is around, um, ways the county has invested in that local area. And this kind of stuff is hugely valuable to winning tax credits with PHFA, um, and the state. And so to the extent that when those requests come in from affordable housing developers about the comp plan. Or about investment in the area, knowing that you've put like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the commissioners have in the. Even a historical site or stormwater or whatever around the corner, that can be the difference maker in getting tax credit. So I just want to, you to be aware of that, you know, as a way to sort of help affordable housing developers, if that's what you want to do when those requests come in.
Yeah, so quick follow-up question on that?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you for telling me that angle.
Um, if we were to, uh, somehow the next iteration of this pro or next year's version. If we were to, uh, somehow the next iteration of this pro, or next year's version of this program had some sort of link to uh, housing, affordable or supply or whatnot, is that, is there, is there an angle there of like, if the program itself had some sort of, uh, correlation, then that would be even stronger when you pulled up and said, you know, this county's doing this and this community?
I think any, um, demonstration of investment by the county into an area where affordable housing is being proposed will be viewed positively. If you're talking about specifically an investment into that affordable housing project, I think that would be even more valuable. You gotta be careful because you start to get into, into grants versus loans and all that kind of stuff, but happy to talk offline with you about it, but, but generally speaking, the PHFA and the state is is looking to make sure that this development isn't being proposed, you know, in a very rural setting that nobody cares about where infrastructure doesn't support. So to the extent that you can say, no, you know, we're doing all, we've done, you know, I think you're one in Jenkentown, you know, we, we've awarded uh, a hundred thousand dollars, five years in a row to pedestrian and we really support pedestrian and that, and affordable housing is gonna be great because of that, and that's exactly what they're looking for. That makes sense.
Alright, so I, sort of similar question. Um, the Office of Housing and Community Development has a quarterly Zoom call with affordable housing.
Come on.
As am I. Um, I don't get that many requests for letters of consistency from the affordable housing developer community around the low income housing tax credit. The ones that I wrote for you earlier this year. Or like, oh, maybe that was it. Um, I wonder if we can approach Charlene to have a couple of minutes on the next call to let everybody know that we can write these letters and that if they want some summary of information on what you're just talking about, that we'd be happy to provide it to bolster their application.
I think that'd be fantastic. I'm sure the development community would, would very much welcome that. I mean, it's all driven by, I don't wanna get too into the weeds. I'm happy to talk. Offline, it's driven by that cycle for application for competitive tax credits with PHFA, which only comes around once every eighteen months.
Yeah.
So you're only gonna get them right as that deadline approaches. Um, and you're only gonna get them for deals that are being proposed in Montgomery County, which is probably only, I don't know, eight or so in the last round, something like that. So it's, you shouldn't be expecting forty and you shouldn't be expecting it year round, but that's surprising, um.
Maybe giving them those examples on that call of here's what we would be providing. It's not just a blanket letter, but there's actually some really good data and examples that will be meaningful for your application. Yeah.
Oh, oh, good ideas.
Hey, anything else for Chloe before we move on to our last agenda? Thanks, bud. Good work to, uh, the board committee.
Excellent work by staff, putting the information together. It was.
And I appreciate the work of the board members for taking the time to be involved, so thank you. Um, next up is our community planning update for Marlboro Township. John Lesher and Abby.
We will make this as, uh, brief and concise as possible.
It has to be, I mean.
Look at that photo.
Oh, are you, wait, where's Dulce, where's Dulce? Are you saying that because Dulce is not?
I'll stand in for her.
No, 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 not at all. Um, for those of you who do not know, my name is John Lesher. I am the environmental planning, uh, manager. Um, due to that new position, I will be handing over Marlboro Township's planning contract to Abby Covert. So this is our transitional presentation. Um, I will start off and then I'm gonna hand it over to Abby. Next, uh, very quickly, this is Marlboro Township, northern, uh, on the western suburbs. So when I do presentations like this, I like to tell the story of the community because I think that's important for the board to understand. Um, not always the specifics, but to understand our experiences and what we feel, um, our takeaways from this. So in my fourteen years being the township planner, uh, township planner for Marlboro Township, really what's interesting is everything they do, they try to strive to protect their natural resources. They understand they are a rural community. Everything around that community revolves around that, whether it's the, uh, desire to, for trails, open space, or understanding that their development is limited by their diabase and the lack of public sewer and the inability to do on lots sewer systems. So it defines the whole character of the community. Um, but they also understand that they want economic development. They, they want to be a thriving economic community that has a strong tax base to be able to do the things that they want to do. Um, this is just an interesting, uh, this is a muster scout reservation. This is one of the biggest parcels. It is the biggest parcel in the township, um, and has been of interest over the past, uh, three years, which was our current contract, um, when some issues that we'll go into in a second. So, um, some of the highlights physically, it does have Sky Mount Lake, um, which is a source of recreation. Um, this master scout reservation, uh, was a scout reservation, is currently a scout reservation, has been, is in the process of being sold, um, from the Boy Scouts. Uh, there was some, it was going to be bought by a private entity, um, to be used as basically a compound. Uh, but that has fallen through and now, uh, is being bought by, um, natural lands and will be eased through, uh, D C North.
I was interested in that compound.
So is the township.
Yeah.
It was like.
You're not supposed to know what's gonna be on the compound.
Exactly. You didn't know exactly. It was a family that was buying all of it and they were not going to develop it. It was gonna be just durrr. You know, so, but that is no longer the case. And, you know, the township is happy that the land will be eased and will continue to be open space. And then Sumney Town, which is, uh, in the southern end of the township, it is the home of their commercial district. Um, and is a point of interest for the township, looking to develop that, looking to have that be the focus of the community for their economic growth. Some of the previous projects that we've seen, um, they have started to receive over the past three years. They are getting more and more grant funding. Um, they did improvements at Finland Park. Um, they got a small grant from Pico, uh, to add recreational facilities at, um, a kayak launch at the, uh, Sky Mount Lake. And they really are starting to see the value of grants and they are becoming a little bit more sophisticated on how they plan to get grants in the pursuit of grants. Um, so that is something that is, through my time there, has, uh, that interest has increased and I think will continue to increase. Trying to take advantage of those opportunities. Um, historically, some of the ordinances that they've worked on, um, it is an interesting combination. I've always found Marlboro interesting in the fact that they do things to, they do ordinance amendments to respond to issues that they're seeing in the community, but they are also forward, more forward thinking. They were one of our first communities to do a renewable energy ordinance. You know, they are interested in these sorts of topics. They are interested in these sorts of issues. Um, they did do what we called a commu- commercial and community adaptation plan. Really trying to meld those interests of protection of their natural resources, eco, uh, and agritourism along with commercial development. How do they combine those two together? Um, recently I picked, pulled these because I think they really tell the story of Marlboro. Um, there's a Dollar General go in it. In Sumney Town, that is big news in Marlboro Township. They are, I like, everybody laugh, like, it's kind of like, it is interesting, but it is the, one of the first commercial developments that they saw coming into Sumney Town. We've talked about it as kind of like an anchor, as if it was, if Sumney Town was a mall, they're gonna be our Macy's. Maybe not a good example at this point, but yeah, they hopefully this will spur development throughout Sumney Town. But it was also interesting because we did a village commercial ordinance. Developer came in, they're like, well, if we do this, we can't do this. We ended up going back, amending the ordinance because we understood that some of the things that we put in were, were too onerous. So we found that balance of maintaining community character. There are design elements that are going into this Dollar General that do not normally go into a Dollar General that help it fit the character of Sumney Town. But it's just an interesting story about how ordinances can evolve and grow. And if a community can work with a developer to, so that both sides can get what they want.
I go to the bottom right slide first because I, I, the anticipation of what the chainsaw means is.
The chainsaw, that's a home occupation ordinance. Literally, and a lot of this was spurred through the pandemic when people were working from home.
Can't wait for this connection.
Dude was chainsawing in his yard, like literally making sculptures. Like that was his home occupation and the township was like, that's cool, but not if you're the neighbor. How do you balance people doing their home occupations and as opposed to in some communities, like where you're an architect or you're doing consulting, like this dude's home occupation was like, I have a chainsaw in my driveway and I'm doing cool stuff.
Wait, was he selling, was he selling the sculptures?
Yes.
What happens if he wasn't selling, was he selling the sculptures from his yard?
He was not, because you cannot do retail sales, then it becomes commercial, but he was creating and then selling them late, offsite later on. And that's the question. What if he was a guy who loved his chainsaw?
I was just gonna say, what if it's just like doing artwork?
You should come to, you should have been at the Marlboro Planning Commission. I spent, we spent hours talking about guys with chainsaws and what they can do and what they can't do.
I'm sure why he's using the Hertz.
Rational.
But, you know.
I think you should do the same in Athens.
I mean, free Google Images, I, I couldn't, I didn't wanna get too deep into the technicalities of chainsaws.
But that's interesting. So the, the problem was that he was selling them, but he was even selling them offsite.
Correct.
But his working the business was creating noise.
Working the business was creating noise. There were people doing, you know, other sorts of.
But if he was just doing artwork and you know.
That's why we had to then do a nuisance ordinance.
I'm gonna start doing all my virtual meetings in my front yard or my driveway and I'll probably make just as much noise as the chain. I'll test it out and see what happens. When I'm working from.
But it, it becomes a cascade of issues in a rural community of, okay, like, you know, chainsaw art. How do we, is that a business? What do we do here? How do we allow somebody to be able to do the work that they wanna do at home? But then we need a nuisance ordinance because what happens is if that person is doing it for their own recreation and you don't wanna be annoying about that. It is a very interesting dichotomy between, don't tread on me, which we, until relatively recently hung up in their conference room and I don't want this person messing with my way of life because I wanna be able to relax in the country. This is why I bought the house where I did. So.
Okay, so.
How do you have a question? And then very similarly, home accessory uses. And a lot of that revolved around people putting up barns. Barns and sheds, because you need to be able to do your chainsawing somewhere, so you had to put in a barn. Barns that are bigger than your houses. Barns that are filling up the lots. How many sheds can you have on one property? Rural issues, you know, and how do you manage them?
So wait, the guy that was doing the chainsaw art was doing it outside or inside?
Well, now he has to do it more inside because he, he, he has, uh, noise restrictions and things of that nature. But people are putting up pole barns everywhere and how do you regulate those? So these are some of the issues, kind of telling the story of one of our more rural communities. But also wanting to see economic development. You want, people moved out there during the pandemic to get away, but now they need to work. They need to live out there. They need to function. So it's an interesting dichotomy. And I am going to say goodbye to Marlboro. Hand it off to Abby and she's gonna lead you through some of the things that are coming up.
So I'm Abby, I'm Abby Cover, taking over, taking over, gonna hopefully take over. Hopefully, hopefully it's a benevolent takeover. Uh, I'm gonna hopefully continue the work that John's been doing. Uh, updating zoning and, uh, subdivision ordinances, comprehensive zoning ordinance updates, so going along with that Marlboro is forward thinking while also trying to be very cautious. They have, uh, with agritourism that was mentioned, they have uh, voice of interest in short-term rentals. So Airbnb is trying to really kind of bolster the community to be a uh, destination for agritourism, but that means providing ordinances for regulating the short-term rentals. The next thing also we're gonna look at is their, uh, heavy industrial zone, which currently is just the quarry, but thinking about how that impacts the rest of the township, also grant assistance. So since they are thinking about grants more often, providing more assistance, really voicing that we do that help for them. And we can help more in the future with finding funding opportunities, writing the grants if needed, providing editing assistance. And then continuing with the commercial, um, desires that they have for Sumney Town to sort of gently make it more of a commercial destination. A parking study is something that has been um, come up as a, a point of interest for them to see if people do wanna go to Sumney Town, where can they park? Where currently can they park? Are there options in the future? So that's upcoming work. And then the terms of contract, this is something Dulce mentioned that she's not here, but that she was interested in seeing. So three years total calendar years this year, twenty twenty six, also most of twenty twenty seven. Uh, one and a half hour days, month ten night meetings a year and, uh, about thirty K for municipal share. And that, that's it. We try to make it quick for you guys. So if you have any questions, comments, concerns.
So what's the agritourism attraction?
The chainsawing. Chainsawing. So they, I mean, most of, most of Marlboro is uh, is rural. But most of it's rural, so they have a lot of preserve space, they have Sky Mount Lake, they have the scout reservation that currently is a reservation is not a compound thankfully, but, but, uh, not a compound is gonna be purchased in theory by natural lands, so that's a a destination, they mostly just people wanting to be in nature is, is the thought. Trails.
The Haynes property, the Haynes property, uh, owned by John Haynes, has recently become a museum which then has event space, both indoor and outdoor event space as well. So people can come to visit the museum, see all those old cars and tractors and whatnot. Um, there are, there will be weddings and other event, corporate events there as well.
Yeah, we, we did the Dollar General and there's another commercial piece next door there that they're presently marketing.
Yes. Yeah, we, uh.
Yeah, somebody's got a chain, chainsaw, wants to move in.
You want his number, the chainsaw guy?
I feel like there's probably more than one chainsaw.
So I'll hear anything I'll let you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I will say while the scout, well, muster scout reservation was there, they actually gave chainsaw certification.
Really?
Yeah, so I've taken, just so we know, fine, anyway, so that's, it's gonna be lost now, the reservation.
Did you do statues, Patty?
I like, I like how my.
Scamling buildings.
I like how they like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, me neither.
That's why I sleep with one eye.
Continuing education credits.
I like, I threw my fourteen years of work at Marlboro Township, the, the takeaway now will be like, oh, Marlboro's got chainsaws.
Economic development.
Well, thank you, Abby. Good luck with Marlboro.
Thank you, thank you kindly.
Yeah, literally big shoes to fill.
I, I do, yeah.
But thank you. So I look forward to seeing the additional work that's being done.
Yeah, so I get to show you guys.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Scott, you're up.
Yep, close it out here. Um, I always start the reports off with staff news, but, um, we're gonna start with what might be considered our adjunct staff, uh, archibor chair, Stephen Klein, wanna congratulate, he was announced and appointed as the chair of Penn Vest uh, by the governor. To all the, uh, Penn Vest, uh, dollars and, um, but no, it's great and then the wonderful, uh, that they have that position.
It's, that's just so what, because I keep pitching the same thing, but it's not known widely, but Penn Vest gives out a billion dollars a year and dreams and to Pennsylvania communities. That's their revolving budget is, is a billion dollars. So it's, you know, it's big, big money and, um, a lot of projects being done throughout the state. I would tell you that it's amazing to me that more southeastern Pennsylvania municipalities don't use the cert, don't use the, uh, the fund, um, as much as they should. Um, you know, we see a lot of um, Philadelphia applications. We also see. Um, Philadelphia applications. We also see Aqua does a lot of applications for projects that they're doing. Um, a lot recently for Pet, PFO and PFOS um, projects. Um, but anyhow, it's, it's uh, a lot of money being circulated in the state through um, just a revolving, revolving debt fund.
Say in my twenty year horizon, like the first ten years I heard about Penn Vest a lot, you know, dealing specifically with myself, but. And then it was a lull there for a while. I'm just replaying, sorry to hear more. So maybe we can talk about uh.
Yeah.
Uh, expanding this up, promoting this up to.
What, are there um, forums and applications, Steve? Or it's just your Penn, Penn Vest website?
If you go to the website, there are, there are regional um, facilitators from Penn Vest that will, that will help. Through the application process, um, and um, will help to guide potential applicants. Um, how, how that, how their, their application should be tailored to, to get the best.
Thanks.
Yeah, exactly. Um, they are considered. Um, there's four meetings, there's four meetings a year, so it's every quarter and the application periods are accepted. Before each of those application periods. Um, so it's not just one date per year. It's just four days per year for applications to be submitted and considered. Um, they go through, you know, needs assessments and the the interest rates are anything from one percent. To two and a half or two point seven percent, which is much less than. Any other uh, financing, even bond financing that that municipalities can get. So, which is either more reason why I don't. Why was I mind that municipalities and authorities don't take advantage of the of the font.
Okay, uh, all right. So back to staff news. Um, I want to welcome uh, new staff member Doug Maisy. He's our new senior trails and open space planner. I started on May nineteenth and uh, got a master's degree in planning at the University of Illinois Chicago. But the last ten years had worked for Campbell Thomas and actually was on uh, the private side of working for some of the county trail projects. Uh, so this. A change in shift really is, could be more closely aligned and appreciate it. Welcome.
Thank you.
We also have two new interns, one of which even starts today, Ally and then Aaron Gauthier, who's been here a couple of weeks. Uh, welcome. They are here for the summer through the Monco Rise program and uh, Steve, I don't know if you wanna.
Uh, yeah, yeah, uh, Aaron and and Ally, they're both full time. They'll be here until August first. Uh, Aaron started a couple of weeks ago. Ally's birthday is today. Um, Ally comes from the University of Vermont, goes in Landstale, uh, just studied abroad in Manchester, I'm getting that right. And Aaron is um, a senior at Woodsburg University, going to September, I guess, with West Kentucky, so uh, he's a bit of a French.
He's from Addington.
Yes, he's from Addington. So, Mike of us.
Kathy?
Oh, yeah.
Torres and like.
I am.
Steve's from Addington and so.
Yes, some things.
Welcome.
Uh, we also have two other new hires uh, that have not started yet, but uh, starting Monday is our newest transportation planner, Russell LeBosie. And then Sharon Zhao starts in August, but uh, that she's been formally uh, approved for that position. So. Uh, we're filling up here. We do have two openings now. Uh, one is the senior environmental planner, left over from the shift from John Leshor and Drew Shaw's retirement. Uh, which are, are we currently interviewing now and administrative assistants replaced Sam Marie Meehan, who retired, her last day was Friday, um, last Friday. And so. All told, we're, we're doing well in the staffing department. Always good to say. Um, and also one last staff news, uh, I do want to shout out to Austin Mosby, who received his master's degree from the University of Central Florida. Um, Austin was a unique, when he, he was still, still pursuing that degree. And he literally commuted to Florida to finish up that work and. Honestly, you know, we took a chance. I think if somebody had just put an application saying, oh, you know, I'm gonna get my degree next year and uh, hire me. Like, we probably would have set that one aside, but also as an intern, we knew how, what, you know, the the prospect in the future uh, that he had. And I'm happy to say it's, it's certainly paid off on that gamble and congratulations. All right, moving on, uh, open space grant program. We've talked about this reports in our work program. We're finally getting ready to to uh, launch. The plan right now, uh, we've been, Bill's section has been screwing with me to get the guidelines drafted. Uh, we have it out to a few outside reviewers to help us uh, identify any last uh, concerns. Uh, but the goal is and the intention is to announce that more publicly at the July Board of Commissioners meeting in mid-July with a. Launch of application receipt set for September first. So uh, I won't. Go into, I was gonna go a little detail, but I'll, I'll, I'll stay back, especially Dulce is not here. She's one of our outside reviewers of those guidelines. So. Uh, we'll talk more about that probably uh, next month or or this September. And uh, there, there's a SEPTA press event today at twelve thirty at the King of Prussia Mall. Uh, commissioners are speaking as well as a number of business. Uh, really highlighting the impacts of SEPTA on the business community and on the King of Prussia Mall itself. So the actual spokesperson for the, or oh, oh, uh, director of the mall. Uh, will be part of that as well as G V F and a few other uh, friends and business owners in that area. Uh, and then finally, Monco twenty fifty, an update, a lot's going on. Uh, this week, third tomorrow is our advisory committee meeting to look at the draft initial goals and recommendations, uh, and. Uh, we'll be bringing that uh, to this board. Most likely at the July meeting, we'll confirm that with our, our board chair and vice chair next week. Um, but if we do so, as, as is intended. It's gonna be more of a workshop setting and it will require in-person attendance, uh, won't, won't, won't be possible to have a virtual component. And so uh, we'll, we'll let you know, but you can already, if you can mark your calendars and anticipate that uh, right now. And then in September, we're still planning September thirtieth, the town, the town hall public meeting on the comp plan at the Ambler Theater. Uh, that has be, has become more solidified, the date and then location is solidified. Uh, so that will be exciting. We're also doing some informal events through uh, leading up to that in various locations in the county and we'll. Uh, let, keep you updated when we have those details. Uh, at that town hall, I also wanted to mention, we're going to also celebrate. Um, if you didn't know, this is the seventy fifth anniversary of MCPC. Uh, which was formed in twenty fifth or nineteen fifty. Uh, and uh, that's exciting. So we want to kind of integrate that. If nothing else, it'll be an excuse to have some cake at the meeting, uh, and also have a, a happy moment in addition to all the comp plan discussion. Um, and we'll be promoting that or noting that anniversary uh, leading up to it as well through social media and other posts.
What is that again?
Uh, that is September thirty. Uh, we should give them full details on that, uh, if we haven't already or.
It's four to six P M at the Ambler Theater. Hopefully it's come and is not during the high holidays. No excuse.
Hmm. Um, okay, and you have the events list, uh, I'll highlight two things, the Perkyon Flood Study, public meetings are on June eighteenth. They're virtual and there are two of them, uh, to share the initial findings and recommendations uh, coming out of that study, uh, which is a very big deal. Uh, and then on June twenty fifth, Patty Gutten Plan is participating, Planner's Day on Capitol Hill with the American Planning Association's National Chapter. Uh, organization, I should say, and uh, she's really gonna be focused on housing, talking to some uh, uh, federal legislators on that issue and what's happening in Washington. It will be correlating our county interests, of course, and policy interests into that as well, which align very closely with the A B S already. That is, oh, one more, uh, save the day also, or or be aware, uh, we've just finalized it. July thirty first, we'll be doing a planning smarter in Landstale, thanks to John. Uh, called Let's Get Energized, local tools for energy transition will be highlighting our E V ordinance, uh, building sustainability and energy ordinance. And also uh, a new solar power ordinance, um, that uh, is just being put together and will be launched uh, next month. That is.
Great, thanks Scott. Any additional comments by anybody on the board? In the room? Not, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.